The meeting will come to order. It's 3:33. Roll call, please.
Ms. Snell, Ms. Metoyer.
Here.
Ms. Flure.
Here.
Mr. Davenport's absent. Ms. Franco.
Here.
Ms. Black.
Here.
Ms. Yelsey.
Here.
Dr. Navarro.
Here.
Okay, are there any public comments on closed session items?
No cards.
No cards, so I will recess to closed session.
Okay, so everybody has a seat now. We're going to call the meeting to order September 11th at 6:00 PM. As you all know, this is the anniversary of 9/11, and so tonight our moment of reflection. We want to think about the victims of 9/11, and I am going to ring the bell. It was suggested I ring the chime four times for the planes that went down and the people. So, I personally, I know we all remember where we were. My children were in school, and it was very, very upsetting. We all know that. But I went right over to the school, and the teachers and the staff were so comforting, and I knew my kids were in good hands, so they stayed there. But it was a terrible, terrible day. Okay, so if we could stand for a moment of reflection. And then after that, the pledge of allegiance led by Van.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adoption of agenda. Move adoption as presented.
Second.
I'm sorry, we're going to make an amendment. Removing informational items to precede community input. Move as amended.
Second.
Okay, so Ms. Black moved as amended, Ms. Yelsey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Adoption of minutes of August 28, 2018.
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Minutes, approval of minutes moved by Mrs. Flure and seconded by Mrs. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Introduction of new staff, Mrs. Olson.
Good evening. I'm going to ask Shelley Humphrey to come to the podium. So we are very pleased to announce, after a very extended search, Shelley Humphrey is our Director of Transportation. Shelley comes to us from Santa Ana, where she has spent four years as the manager of transportation. She has a vast experience beyond that, but in that position in particular, she implemented and organized and oversaw a complex routing of 180 daily routes. She established processes and procedures to ensure that there was smooth and safe operations of the buses. So she will be an excellent fit for our group as they continue to offer our first-class transportation to our students. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Navarro, and board and cabinet members for having me here. I'm excited to be here. This is day two. I survived day two. So I've talked to a lot of people. I feel like I was a politician out shaking hands and kissing babies. It was all good. Great group of people. I'm thrilled to be here. I actually wasn't looking for a job. It kind of found me, so I'm pleased about that. It was the right direction for me, and I'm grateful to be here. So what I can tell you a little bit, thanks, Leona, for that introduction. I started my career as a driver many years ago at FedEx and have been in transportation most of my career. Well, all of it, really, which brought me here to Newport, and I love that I'm here. I love everybody I've met so far. They've been so gracious. The team over there is phenomenal. The office staff, we're going to get going in the right direction, and again, I thank you. I look forward to working and serving our community, most importantly, our students and our families here. And I met Stu, my new favorite best friend, my very first, really good friend. He figured out I had to put the key in the hole in order to get the lock to work, so. So, good job. Very excited about that. So, thank you. If there's ever anything I can do for any of you, I'm a phone call away, and I'll jump on it. So I look forward to serving all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
And your cold's better?
My cold is better. Thank you for that. Yes, I do feel better. A little bit of a cough still, but.
Okay. We'd like to take a picture. Do you have someone here in the audience?
I don't, and my kids live far away. One is in Germany, and one lives down in San Diego, so I apologize. But I do have twin boys, so they're just. So we can pretend they're here if I have really two young guys.
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have our brand-new student board members that we met them today and had dinner with them and their parents today, tonight, and so welcome again. So we're going to start with your reports, and we're going to start with Van.
Good evening, Ms. Snell and the board. I'm Van Fine for Back Bay Montevista. I have quite a few things to talk about today, because, you know, this is the first report of the year. First, I'd like to talk about our new fluid system that Mr. Trocchio implemented as of a week ago. The idea of the fluid system is that you start the year with five classes, and as you finish them, you get new ones. Now, at the beginning, I was skeptical about this program because it kind of felt like Montevista, just in the classroom. But after having, you know, been in the classes and after having seen how much people are getting done, I can definitely say that it is a success, resoundingly.
Good.
Grit, guts, resilience, initiative, tenacity is our new PBIS rebrand and mantra. Students exhibiting a grit, this is really hard to pronounce, grit incident earn grit cards that enter them in raffles for prizes and early-release barbecues on Friday. Mr. Trocchio will be conducting tryouts for a basketball team that will represent Back Bay across the county against other continuation schools. Being on the team is a huge incentive that Mr. Trocchio hopes will boost attendance rates and morale among some of our more athletic men on campus. ASB, under the new direction of Ms. Marseille, is more effective than ever. We've already had a free popsicle day last Friday and are planning to have at least one event every week. This week's event will be a balloon toss, the winners of which will have the privilege of throwing water balloons at our beloved principal. Huge thanks to Dr. Bauermeister for helping us procure a booth at the Lions Club Fish Fry. This helped us offset what would have been a huge percentage of our ASB's current budget. Speaking of which, Mr. Trader, I am the treasurer, so if you would like to give me money, just talk to me, okay? The Back Bay Montevista PTSA and Rotary recently auctioned off a bicycle at the Sunrise Rotary Club's Rock Our Heroes BBQ for an astounding $1,500 that will be used to support our PTSA.
Wonderful.
I just want to speak for a moment about how amazing Ms. Marseille is. She has headed up our ASB and our new yoga program at our school, and she is absolutely amazing. Definitely better than our last guy, for sure. That'll be all for me tonight. Thank you.
I have a question. What's the "I"?
The "I"?
And grit.
I've got guts, resili-
Grit is guts, resilience, initiative, tenacity.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Great. That's a great report. Thank you. Okay, Isaiah from Costa Mesa High School.
Good evening, President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet, distinguished guests. So I'm from Costa Mesa High School, as you all know, and in terms of an academic update, our AP Environmental class, which I'm in, is beginning a year-long research project, which we'll be conducting every month by visiting the Back Bay Science Center, which personally, I'm really excited for. It seems like a really awesome program. And mock trial, which I'm also part of, just had our first meeting today, Tuesday at lunch, and will be beginning practice on Friday. And our NHS program is now going to be, we're going to be starting our community service projects. And Project Lead the Way, which is a very popular program at our school, it's now entering its fourth year. So now the kids who started it off are now ending it together and have gone through the program completely, and they all really love it. And, oh, and we just added ROP Sports Marketing and Administration of Justice to our school, which have been really popular. I've heard from a couple of friends who really like those programs. And then in terms of academics, this Friday, our football team's going to be playing Los Amigos, and Boys Water Polo is going to be playing at the Hank Velenkamp Varsity Tournament. And cross-country, which I was just notified, I didn't know, but one of the juniors at our school, Diane Molina, just broke a course record just recently, so I've heard amazing things about her, so. Looks like she's going to be a rising star at our school.
Second year in a row.
And girls volleyball will be playing at the Bellflower Varsity Classic. And so in terms of our events, we just had our back-to-school, no-theme, themed dance. I quite liked that. They kept it simple. Which actually had above-average attendance. It was a significant increase for us, so we're really happy about that. And we just had our first football game of the year against La Quinta, and the Mesa Maniacs were very energetic. We always love them to be. And some current events we have right now, or that are about to happen, we have, our ASB just started for our Suicide Prevention Week. It's Yellow Ribbon Week, and they've been having encouraging notes that they've been passing around in class, and they're, I think it's tomorrow, I believe, they're planning to put little yellow ribbons in everyone's cars in the parking lot. So that's been a, that's been a big success. And then tomorrow will be Senior Sunrise, which I probably will sleep through, but it's at 6:15 in the morning at the school field, so hopefully.
Who came up with that one?
I don't know. I definitely like it in theory, but it's not for me. And anything else to add is that our, our school chapter of NHS is starting our community service projects, and I'm looking, as president, I'm going to start doing, I'm looking to work with the soup kitchen in the area on 19th Street. We're going to try to get a project done there.
Wonderful. Great. Great report.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer from Estancia High School.
Good evening. Well, I'm representative of Estancia High School, and one of our academic updates is remodeling the library, which has been very beneficial, more accessible to anybody. It's been more, new furniture, new paint. It's more comfortable to see, and it's more like a 21st-century library. We also have a lean crew, which is only juniors and seniors that mentor freshmen. It's around 64 or 65 juniors and seniors that mentor freshmen throughout the whole year. They meet four times a week during equal advisory. And basically, they build a relationship with them and also mentor them throughout the school year. So like, if their grades are going down, the freshmen, then they'll be like on their case, just so they can get it up. And also during the summer, we have developed a medical lab for our medical academy. And basically, half of the class is a college studying desk, and then the other half is, has, has like a hospital bed, a dummy that actually has a monitor into it, so like if a heartbeat, it has real-life oxygen, so like they can practice doing oxygen masks and whatnot. It's really beneficial to them because it gets, besides the theory, they're practicing the theory as well, which is really helpful. And then one of our current events at our school was Welcome Day, which was basically lean crew. They, I think it was August 29 this summer, and they basically, all the freshmen come to our school, and the lean crews get their freshmen, and after that, they play games to like open up to one another. And as well, they walk them around the school so they can get more comfortable in where like every, every other class is at. And one of our events coming up is Club Rush, and all our clubs promote their clubs, and as well get students involved within everything. That's it.
Wonderful. Great report. Thank you. I'm so impressed. It's our first report. It's, great job, you guys. Well, it needs to be seen. Raphael. Oh, okay. Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Raphael. I'm the representative for Newport Harbor. So this is, we have the IB curriculum at our school, and I have a lot of friends who are in it, seniors, and I have a lot of friends that are in it junior years, and I've only heard good things from it. So a lot of the people who are in the IB curriculum are very happy with it. Update on that. And then we are also finding, we added a course called Explore Computer Science, which is a freshman computer science course for people who are coming into Newport Harbor High School. And they're, and I'm really good friends with the teacher who's teaching it to the freshmen, and he's saying that the kids are loving it, and they're really excited about doing computer science and then going into AP, hopefully their sophomore or junior year. And then ASB is working really hard on welcoming all the new freshmen and every, the sophomores, juniors, and seniors, well, coming back to school. And we did, we were giving out Krispy Kreme doughnuts last week to them during nutrition, and everyone was super happy.
Good job.
And Newport Harbor High Schools are, the students are very happy about the football team as of lately. And then they're really excited because we won our game last Friday. And we're going to have a homecoming tailgate next week for our homecoming rally. And everyone is super excited, and then we've been posting on our social medias, and all the students are like going, asking people to go into carpools and then just jam out to music in the parking lot. We just had our mandatory club meeting today during lunch for all club presidents who want to start a club on campus, so we have a Google form for that, and we asked for an advisor and everything. So that, we released that today. And some events that are coming up is, this Wednesday night, we're having Freshmen Back-to-School Night. So the parents, freshmen's parents come and get, get to know their, get to know their students, teachers, and everything like that. And we're also having our Homecoming Rally, and it's going to be Coachella-themed, so it's going to be very exciting. We still have to pick the whole star, but I know my ASB has got that covered. And we're also having a really cool dance in November instead of a homecoming. So we're going to have a concert-in-the-park kind of themed dance. So we're going to bring a lot of students who have bands, like to come and perform, and we're going to sell, we're going to have, the tickets are going to be a lot cheaper so that more students come, because we do know that homecoming is a really expensive dance to hold, especially with venues and stuff. So we're really excited to be having this one at school and having it very cheap, at a reasonable price, so that more students can come. We could have more people.
Interesting idea.
And then some unique information that I found out about today is, a lot of government, a lot of the teachers that are, that are, that have senior students are passing out pamphlets for them to help at the polls this November for the midterm elections, which I think is amazing, because everyone who's becoming a senior is going to be 18, hopefully this year or next year. So they're giving an opportunity for all seniors to help with the polls nearby, and they'll get $100, so. And then some, my teacher's giving us extra credit, so.
Wow, that's great.
So hopefully, with that incentive, more students will understand how voting works and how politics works in our, in the US, so.
Super idea.
I will be doing it.
Thank you so much. Great report. Okay, I'm, wait.
Come, come.
CDM? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I don't know your name. Lucy. Oh, we don't know, are you CDM or Early College?
Early College.
You're going to tell me. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Lucy Demetrius from Early College High School. While the other schools started pretty recently, we started about a month ago. So we have kind of a lot of stuff going on right now. During the second week of school, over 43% of our 10th through 12th graders received the principal's honor roll certificate for attaining a 3.5 GPA or higher last semester. This has brought our, our school's overall GPA to its highest, to its highest ever, so we're very happy about that. Those students who earned a 4.0 GPA or raised their overall GPA by half a point or more last semester were also invited to the Students of the Semester Lunch held at our school on August 31st. And we had a lot of students come to that, too, so it was a very fun experience. We held our first house competition of the school on August 17th, and this was our house induction, where we assembled new students into one of their four houses for the rest of their high school experience at ECHS. Last year's champions were, unfortunately for me, the Barracudas, but we can try next year. We had a very well-attended back-to-school night on August 30th as families not only visited the classes, but got to talk to students' teachers and get more familiar with their schedules. They also learned more about Coastline Community College, PTSA, and our school's new safety measures, which is the Raptor Visiting Management System. We're still getting the hang of it, but it's been pretty good so far. Our Financial Literacy Seminar Series was also presented to parents along with our mental wellness activities that it is going to be incorporating throughout the year for all parents and students. One event that we just started this past Friday for our ninth graders was the High School Transitions Program, which is very new at ECHS, but it is being conducted by the OC Healthcare Agency. And we basically just kind of help the new ninth graders transition from middle school to the experience at Early College High School. We kind of just explain how everything's going on and give them steps and resources if they ever need help on anything. In addition, three parent education evening workshops were also held at our site this fall. They will be held at our site this fall. They're hosted by our PTSA, and they are made to help educate our parents on adolescent challenges and teach them how to support their children. Lastly, we have brought back the Mesa Program to our school, which is the Math, Engineering, and Science Achievement, and we've actually had a very good outcome. A lot of students are involved this year, and they're, all we've heard is good things. We look forward to having our students display their projects as they compete in various competitions sponsored by UCI throughout the year. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, great reports, you guys. I didn't miss anybody, did I? Okay. What, go ahead.
I just got to ask you a question, is that I think it would be really nice, because we're transitioning into a new system of appointments, of our, we're transitioning into a new, new approach to our student board members, that we schedule that either next, that the next meeting or the first meeting in October, that we swear them in. As a nice transition is to, to make it a little bit more formal in terms of the appointment, is we literally swear them in, have a swearing-in ceremony.
I promise to have no life, I promise to have no life. I'm giving it all to the four.
Exactly.
So they can take it all, so I would just recommend that recommendation.
Okay. We're going to move on to the Harbor Council PTA, and we're welcoming new PTA President Julie Link.
I'm Julie Link, Harbor Council PTA President. And good evening, President Snell, board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and guests. We had our first Harbor Council PTA meeting yesterday morning, and we welcomed all the PTA presidents back. And I'm very excited to say that 24 out of 28 PTAs were represented, and very pleased with that. Big turnout. So we had Annette Franco, who presented the new Newport Mesa Unified School District mobile app, which was really received well. I mean, I was, I was really, really impressed. Yeah, we had Dr. DiAgostino discuss the upcoming parent education program. And the first session will be starting October 3rd at Corona Del Mar on ways to keep child, your child safe, and it'll be presented by Vlad Anderson. So excited about that series and educating the parents, so it's wonderful. Secondly, we are thrilled, absolutely thrilled, to launch our new e-membership, electronic membership program. It's ran through a, a program called Totem, and it is all with a smartphone. You can sign up via credit card, and it sends out notifications, reminders to join PTA, which is great, to not only increase our membership, but keep the members that we do have. And what it does, it funnels up the money to, through the channels through PTA. So it eliminates a lot of accounting, check writing, and all of that doodad stuff. So also, it generates a membership list, so like if you're at the PTA meetings and you're doing a voting, it shows if there's, you know, if you're a PTA member, if that vote qualifies. It also, all the perks, you can print your membership card right then and there, all the perks, and let's see, what else?
TOD, is T-O-T or TODU?
What's the web? T-O-T-E-M is the program that we're using. And what it is, is the PTA, every PTA has different amounts of PTA membership, and, and that is still the same as per their bylaws. And what it is, is Totem charges another dollar, but most people who want to do it, everybody's doing, and nobody carries cash.
So we want to join the PTAs. How do we get on?
Right. That's, thank you. That was my question.
I'll send you a link. Yeah, well, we were discussing that, you know, because I know like a lot of you like to join.
Multiples.
The thing is, they have in the past set a flat rate for you guys, but the thing is, we don't want to short the member.
We've always paid whatever the dues were for that school.
For that school. And so, well, Totem will charge just a dollar on top of that. So I guess you'd have to find every link for every school. We have eight schools that are participating, are already up. So what it does is, is state PTA has, has done it, then the 4th District, and they had to get on it. And then I had people at my house, the treasurer and everything, and we got on it, then we could invite the units. So everybody puts their banking information on there, and it, all, all the money transfers there. You can still join with the old-fashioned, the membership envelopes and put cash in there or a check. But then the, the membership person can go in, into the program in Totem, enter the information, and it automatically gives you, you know, the list. It's a wonderful, wonderful tool, and we're very pleased to have that, so we're really impressed.
While, while we're transitioning, because you said eight schools are up right now, and I'm sure this is our transition year.
This is, yeah.
Last year, schools that wanted to offer membership to the board, sorry, Sherry, they gave like ten little flyers, ten little flyers to Sherry from each school. I would love it if you did that again, because that was really nice to not have to go from school to school to school. So if that can happen, that would be great.
Or just one sheet that says, here are the schools, and here's the membership, and just.
I can give you the links to the eight schools that are already on. And then what I can do is send out a, an email blast to all of our PTA presidents to have them see if, I'll do a, a generic flyer that they can customize and, and hopefully attach with an envelope or whatever.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good. And lastly, Harbor Council, along with the League of Women's Voters of Orange County, is hosting a candidate forum for the Newport Beach, our Newport Mesa Unified School Board candidates on October 10th from 6 to 9 o'clock at Harbor School in Costa Mesa. And as always, Harbor Council PTA is nonpartisan, so, okay, that's it.
It's a what school?
Harper.
Harper. I thought you said harbor.
Harper. Harper.
Multi-purpose room.
Okay, in the multi-purpose room. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. Okay, so we're moving on to reports. Report on Secondary Summer Language Academy, Mr. Lee Sung.
Yes, I'll, I'll start this one. I'm really excited to ask Vanessa Gailey and her team up to the podium to share some information with you about the language academy that they, they started running last year in conjunction in support from Cal State Fullerton. What I can share with you is that I had the pleasure and luck of being able to participate in their culminating experience this year. And all I can share with you is that there was a feeling in the room of community, and it was really obvious that, that kids are walking away with increased language skills through exploring their own lives and telling their own stories while learning and creating a community of learners themselves. So I'd like Vanessa Gailey and her team to come on up and share.
Okay. Thank you very much, John. President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, executive cabinet. I am so pleased. Of all the projects that I do, this is one of my very favorite ones, and I'm very pleased to introduce. and I'm very pleased to introduce the team to you. And it's, um, part of the team, so I'm gonna have Kelly Katz come forward. She's our administrative intern for the program. And I'll go ahead and hit present. And then, uh, I have one of three teaching teams here, and, um, they'll speak a little bit about how they all come together. But I have Gretchen Conini, who is, um, one of, she was the lead teacher in the classroom, and she's also one of our ELD TOSAs. And then we have Jacqueline Gaetan Alarcon, and she is a school community facilitator who works at our district level. You see her at D-LAC meetings when you come. And then we also have Sabino Reyes, and he's a Cal State Fullerton pre-service teacher. And so this is one teaching team that was together in a classroom. Um, but I'm not going to steal their thunder. I'm gonna do, um, the best thing I can do would just get out of Kelly's way and let her lead.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Dr. Navarro. My name is Kelly Katz, and I was the administrative intern for our Summer Language Academy. These were the languages spoken in our different classrooms. We had Spanish, we had Portuguese, we had Russian, um, we had Vietnamese, among a few others. So all these students were working together to increase their language proficiency in English. Our curriculum was taken from Cal State Fullerton, working in partnership with us. And this was all geared towards increasing our students' reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills. And we also focused a lot, um, as was previously mentioned, on the students learning more about themselves and who they are now, who they used to be, and how they want to use those two components to see who they want to become in the future. We utilized the co-teaching model in our relatively small class sizes, which was great because our students were really able to get more personalized attention. So this is our team. Uh, as Ms. Galey mentioned, uh, one of our group of three teachers is here to speak to you tonight. With our co-teaching model, we had an NMUSD-certificated employee, an NMUSD-classified employee, and a Cal State Fullerton teacher candidate all working together in tandem as the teachers in each classroom. I can honestly say that I was inspired by our teachers and our students. I was fortunate to go into the classrooms every single day and work with the teachers and students, so I got to see things that were happening every day. Our students definitely made growth in their language proficiency. But just as important, their self-confidence increased in their language proficiency, in themselves as academics, and in themselves as people. We had a four-week program, which ran from 9:00 to 12:00, Monday through Thursday, so we were really getting through the material. Week one focused on who am I as an individual and who are we as a class? So this was really setting the stage for building that sense of community and what each person's role is in that community. Some of our main projects were the Who Am I essay, which we used as a pre-and post-test along with autobiographical poems. Week two took that a step further, who am I in my communities? What community am I a part of, and what communities are we a part of, and how are they the same? So we did some Venn diagrams, a personal timeline, a family portrait. And then our students utilized, um, a program called Book Creator to create books about themselves. Week three, we had our trip to Cal State Fullerton. So all the student participants and all of the teachers and myself went to Cal State Fullerton for a tour, which was great, because not only did we talk about academics, we also got the students interested in other things about school, the programs that they could be a part of, the sports, all the different academic teams. So we were really able to show them what their life in college could look like. Our last week of the program, looking forward, how will I bring my whole self to the futures? How can I transcend borders? This was a big thing that we talked about. Not just physical borders that you may think of between countries, but what other borders do we have as we're moving between different parts of our lives? And then, again, at the end, we did that Who Am I essay, which was our post-test.
What's an agam- agamog?
Um, agamograph.
Agamograph.
I will reserve that question for our teachers. They're up next, so they're gonna talk to you a little bit more in detail.
Good evening, Members of the Board, Dr. Navarro, Members of the Cabinet, and guests. I would like to share and to read to all of you this beautiful poem. Uh, the name of the poem is "I Am." I am Osmeel, family of Nestor Corbera and Edir Rivera, who needs to sleep eight hours, and my family. Who loves to read, play, and my family. Who appreciate friendship, family, time, and food. Who doesn't like closed spaces, boring things, and the broccoli. Who read books of Percy Jackson, books of fear, and books of myths. Who fear the closed spaces and the tornadoes and not being able to be with my family. Who dream to be a lawyer, to travel all over the world and live life to the maximum. Who admires my dad, my mom, and my uncles. Who want to learn French, karate, resident of Center Avenue. I am Osmeel. I am an English learner. During the Summer Language Academy, I learned that you don't need to deny who you really are or the place you come from, or stopping speaking your first language to belong and to become part of this beautiful country. Thank you.
Wow. Lovely.
All right, my name is Gretchen Conini. I'm the secondary ELD TOSA here in the district. It's my seventh year in Newport Mesa. Um, well, I started out my career in Newport Mesa as a student at Newport Heights. And went to Ensign, graduated from Newport Harbor, um, and then came back because I just love this district so much. Uh, taught at Ensign, T-Winkle, and then last year moved into the ELD TOSA role. Before I get into my spiel, I'll, I'll explain the agamograph. We don't have a picture of it up here, but basically what the kids did was they drew a picture of something about themselves now or their past, where they came from. And then they also drew a picture of what they hope for themselves in the future. And you went through this process of cutting the two, and you fold it up. And when you look at it from one angle, you see one picture. And then when you move to the other angle, you see the other picture.
That's what it is.
Yeah, it was really fun. The kids really enjoyed it. We had a lot of really fun, um, art projects for them to do, which I personally really enjoyed, because a lot of times that's, we don't do that in the classroom, especially when you're working with lower-level ELs, because it's all about the instruction and getting the language going. Um, so, this was my first year teaching Summer Language Academy, and I was really excited to do it, because when I took my TOSA position last year, it pulled me out of the classroom full-time. Um, so I hadn't been in with kids for a year. So being able to go back in, teach with the age group that I was teaching before, was really exciting for me. And then to top it off, we had, I had two other wonderful instructors in the room with me, and we had a group of eight amazing kids who were entering 8th grade. So it was a great experience all around. Um, what I really enjoyed about the program is that it was so centered on the students and their identity. And as much as we try, especially in secondary, when we have 180 kids every day, you don't usually get to know your students to that level that we were able to get the, to know the students that we had in Summer Language Academy. And it really, like John said, it really did create this sense of community where the students felt safe with each other, they felt safe with, safe with us, telling their stories, using English, even though they knew they were making mistakes. They felt more comfortable doing it. Um, I had taught in our old summer program that we did years ago, the Summer Reading Academy, and I saw three major differences between that program and what we did now. And the first one was the curriculum. So again, this curriculum, it was student-centered. It's about who they are, their identity, the communities, and then the art and the poetry, I thought was great. The program we had before, it was more just reading, annotating articles. The kids seemed to burn out pretty quickly, whereas here, the kids were excited to come every day. They were sad when the program was over, you know? They were saying, why, why is it ending now? Why don't we do this through the whole summer? And that's not what you expect to hear from junior high and high school kids who are in a summer, a summer program. Um, the second difference I saw was the caliber of the instruction. Um, for this program, they were looking for teachers who'd been teaching for five years or more as the, um, as the certificated teacher. And that's not to say that I wasn't fabulous after my first year of teaching, you know, when I did summer school for the first time. But when you're getting more seasoned veteran teachers in, you do have a different quality of instruction and support for the kids in the classroom. And then the third difference I saw was just how the kids felt about the program. Like I said, they were excited about it. They were happy to be there every day. Um, and the two, when we had kids at the end reflect on the program, the two big takeaways that we heard over and over again was that they were so happy to have made new friends from different schools and that they felt they had more confidence in their use of English and that they were gonna go into the next school year feeling more confident in the classroom with English-speaking students.
That's cool.
Thank you.
This is a golden bell in the making.
It is a golden bell, yeah.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sabino, and I was the Cal State, the Cal State Fullerton student working with the Summer Language Academy. Sorry about my voice, I'm getting over, uh, being sick last week.
Oh, my goodness.
But I wrote a couple notes about the Summer Language Academy. Um, as a future educator, a goal of mine is to encourage students to bring their whole self into the classroom. And as y'all have seen earlier, um, that was a goal that the Summer Language Academy had already prepared for us as well. Um, when students are able to do so, um, bring their whole self, they become active and willing participates in their, active participants in their own learning. Sorry. And encouraging them to do so, we were able to instill a sense of pride in language rather than one of shame, which is typical of some students, unfortunately. Um, through reoccurring themes of language, identity, and culture, our students developed an understanding that learning a language was not a linear process, but rather one that was gonna take trial and error. Our experiences as educators who learned or attempted to learn a second language also helped create a sense of community and as well a sense of belonging inside of our classroom. Um, one thing that I took away largely from this, um, experience was it instilled back the same, um, excitement and the same passion I have for teaching younger students. As somebody who learned English in elementary school, um, I was able to relate to the students and their struggle and having to learn a second language. But throughout the program, we saw a lot of growth. At the beginning, it was hard to build community because students were afraid to communicate largely in English inside the classroom. Um, but we let them know that it wa- it was okay, that into the classroom was meant for us to make mistakes. And sharing our experiences, um, mine personally of learning, uh, English in elementary school, and of Jackie's of learning English as well, and even of Gretchen's of trying to learn Spanish in high school. The students were able to create relationships with us that, um, helped them build trust. And through that trust, they felt more confident in making mistakes and in sharing their stories. And in sharing their stories, the outcome was just something that we couldn't have imagined. Um, we were very proud of all of them, and the relationships we were able to build with each and every one of those eight students was like absolutely beautiful to work with. And I would absolutely love the opportunity to come back and do this work again, because it's the type of work that's necessary for students to feel a part of their community. Thank you.
Good job, man.
Thank you.
To close this part of our presentation, I just want to quickly review some of the lessons that were learned by our staff and our students. Several times, teachers shared stories in our daily debriefs about how students were promoting inclusivity among one another. They would take the initiative to say, no, 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 let's make sure we include everyone. And I think my favorite example of that is during some independent work, students were allowed to choose songs to listen to. And there were a lot of, um, different songs being played, but it was basically all from one genre. Well, at one point, one of the students said, why don't we listen to some of her mu- music? Pointing to a student who was from Russia. And that just went a long way for making that particular student feel like, hey, my opinion, my voice does matter. Teachers were happy that they could see their students learning English, becoming more confident, making friends, and were clearly dedicated to their work. Teachers explained to me that this program went a long way towards changing their perspectives on how important it is, not only to get to know one's students, but especially when working with ELD students, it's important to build a relationship. So as some of our teachers mentioned, they feel comfortable making mistakes. Going on with what I said, building relationships, students need to know that they, that we care, that we're here for them. It's one thing to say it, it's another thing to do it and make that, um, connection be felt. One example I have of that is at our closing ceremony on the last day of the program. I was surprised how many students came up to me and gave me a hug and wanted to take selfies with me. This was really cool, because I saw them doing that with their teachers, who they had built these great relationships with, but then they came over to me and were sharing these stories with me. And it was awesome to know that we were giving them confidence and we were giving them hope to know that no matter what their difficulties had been and the stories that they've had in their life, the things they've gone through, or things no people should have gone through, but they were here. They came, they came every day to better themselves. And that's something that they will always have, and no one can take away from them. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Galey.
Okay, great, thank you.
See, right, I just, I have to get out of her way. So, um, you know, and I think, um, John said that what we were looking for is, it was an experience. And it was an experience for our students, it was an experience for our teachers, and that's really what we wanted to instill. We wanted our summer program to be something different than perhaps it had been before. We recognize that skills are important, but we also recognize that kids feeling like they belong and feel, feeling like we are here for them, and also having an amazing experience for teachers is really something we wanted to provide. So I'd like to bring, um, Dr. Allison Dover up to speak about the program design, about where we've been, and a little bit about where we're going.
Okay.
Great, thanks, Vanessa.
Thanks. I'm wondering if you, if the teachers can stay up here? Because we have some questions, and so we'd love to, uh, so, yeah. And we might take a picture of all.
A selfie.
Yeah, that's selfie, yeah.
So I'm Allison Dover. I'm an Associate Professor of Education at Cal State Fullerton, and I'm one of the designers of the Summer Language Academy. This is our second year here in Newport Mesa. Um, we also this year ran Summer Language Academies in Anaheim Union High School District and in Escondido. Next year, we'll be in five districts throughout Orange County with two additional districts expressing interest. As you know, this program is an enrichment program that's designed for newcomer students, new Americans, and emergent bilinguals. The students in Summer Language Academy entered the US Public Education System within the last two years. Generally, students enter with varying levels of spoken English, of written English. Many of them are not only emergent bilinguals in English, some of them come in speaking multiple languages other than English. We have students who enter the program very uncomfortable having conversations in English and sometimes even having academic conversations in their first languages or in their native languages. Part of what we do in program design is we really think about, how can this program benefit not only the learners who participate, but also the educators who work within a district? Um, as I talked with Vanessa about the program, we described this program as being about 40% for the students and 60% for our teachers. Because our goal is to prepare all of our teachers to be culturally and linguistically responsive and sustaining educators who can take the experiences and the professional development that they get during this summer program back into their classrooms throughout the rest of the academic year. In Summer Language Academy, which is a four-week summer intensive program, um, students receive instruction three hours a day, they're in the classroom. And then our teachers have an additional one to two hours each of those four days a week, where they're engaged in preparation or they're debriefing what the day was like. We also provide onsite coaching. I'm onsite throughout the summer program to help teachers think about, ah, how could I do this a little bit differently? Or I feel like this was not quite as effective as I want it to be. Or this was really effective, how can we learn from one another? Um, throughout the program, students engage with, we brought a whole collection of, of, uh, literature here. Students engage with high-interest, young adults, and children's literature, as well as music and poetry written in English and other languages. Each of the texts selected engages issues of identity, culture, language, and borders. And so we want students to use their own experiences as a springboard to doing some of the types of literary analysis that they'll be required to do throughout their high school experience. Um, students are also working with art throughout the program. One of the young adult texts, for example, they worked with this summer, is a text entitled "Peacing Me Together", in which the main character works with collage as a means of representing identity. You saw some of the artwork and collages that students created throughout. They then would analyze vignettes in the text to think about, how do we relate this back to our experience? Um, this is, we consider this at Cal State Fullerton, one of the model programs that we have in terms of what an effective school-community-university partnership can look like. One of our Summer Language Academy sites was recognized by OCDE this year as a model program in cultural and linguistic responsiveness and received an award for that site. We certainly would be interested in working with Newport Mesa to bring this program up and sort of raise it up as a model of what this programming can look like. Um, in terms of how we think about curriculum, each of the teachers talked about the curriculum that they used. Since one of our goals is increasing the capacity of district teachers to implement these strategies in their classroom, our curriculum is very flexible by design. So each of the sites has a shared set of So each of the sites has a shared set of texts, a shared set of weekly activities, and culminating common assessments. But the ways that each team of teachers chooses to operationalize those assignments is flexible. Teachers spend 15 hours prior to the beginning of the program working together to decide how they are going to bring these projects to light in their classroom. Each of the teams is diverse in terms of not only the types of educators in the room, but also the subject areas that those educators have fluency in. And we had biology teachers. We have English-language arts teachers. We have teachers from multiple disciplines coming together and thinking about, okay, what does it mean to teach literature in sustaining ways? One of the teachers in our Newport Mesa team, for example, did an ecosystem activity where we looked at the relationship between the individual and the family and the neighborhood and the community and the global world. And he related that back to the scientific concepts that he taught in his day-to-day classroom. And so by developing these types of skills in terms of working with emergent bilinguals, developing the skills to help students use their full linguistic repertoires in the classroom, we're hopeful that your teachers will then be able to come back and say to colleagues, hey, I have this idea that I'd like to try out in some of the classes each of your student board members were representing.
Wonderful.
So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mrs. Yelsey.
So the four of you had eight students?
The three of us did, yes.
Three, had eight students? And were there other cohorts that had? So how many children in all? How many students do we have in all?
About 35.
Oh, okay. And how were they selected? Or how were they?
So essentially, we ran a spreadsheet. We looked for students who have been here for a year, for two years or one year, and who had a lower language level. Obviously, students who've come in fully bilingual, that's probably not the right setting for them. So we had an initial, gosh, I think it was 78 students who were invited. And then not everybody took us up on the offer, but we reached out and it was students going into grade eight all the way up to into grade 11. Correct. Last year, we had a larger group of students. But this year, and initially, we thought, oh, this is going to be too small. The classes are going to be too small. We were aiming for about 15 to 20. But what the teacher shared with me is because it was so small, it could be intimate. And they just thought, what a great opportunity to build relationships. So whether it was eight or whether it was 20, it's still a good fit. And we wouldn't have gone larger than 22.
It sounds amazing. I mean, three teachers and eight students? Wow.
That's like our summer engineering. It's very like.
Well, this is smaller than that one. Anyway, great. It sounds fabulous. Great job.
Mrs. Flore.
Outstanding and very timely. Couple of things. One, how are the teachers selected? And is it voluntary on the teachers' part? Or how do they get selected?
They interview.
And are they from all of our secondary?
It's a regular summer position. It's flown and it's described. And then we interview them. We're looking for candidates who have a passion for serving students and for being culturally proficient. And essentially, those are the criteria. And you don't have to be an English-language arts teacher. As we said, it's not content-specific. What we're trying to do is create an experience for students.
So now you've created this great experience for these students. They're now going off to one of our six schools or, you know, if you talk, you know, the middle schools and high schools. How are you keeping them together to be engaged? Because they feel like a sense of community and now you're ripping that community apart. Are there any activities or any plans to keep them together as a cohort or just a meeting? I mean, just something? Are they being grouped in their classrooms? Can you tell us?
I don't know that ripped apart is quite the right term.
Well, no, but you know what I mean? I mean, they're just, they're moving on in their lives to another area.
And we hope for all of the students who are year-one students that they may come back again next year. And the program is purposely built so that each year, about 50% of the material is the same and 50% is different. Quite honestly, though, when I look at the material, I could benefit today from reading these texts and being in community and asking these questions. And I think all of our teachers feel the same way. So it's really about thinking about what will feel right in the room. We also learned last year, we had a couple of students who were not year-one or year-two. And even though their levels may have been lower, it was a different kind of atmosphere, right? So we want to make sure that we're providing the atmosphere of, hey, I'm new here, or I've been here a while. So we're thinking through what are the different levels and the different areas that we can support while still keeping the community feeling of small classrooms? So to your point, we haven't yet made a concerted effort to have a kind of reunion, but that's definitely something we can think about.
Sure.
So Jacqueline works at.
She's over at T-Winkle part-time. And we had quite a few students in the program at T-Winkle. And so she made it very clear to them that she was going to make sure she was checking in on them and keeping tabs, not keeping tabs in a bad way, but making sure that they have the support that they need. Part of the luxury of the job that I have is that I'm able to go to different schools. So I have popped in on a few of them already. I have one student who's at Ensign, and he told me at the very end that, you know, he loved Percy Jackson. It's his poem that we read. And so I told him, okay, well, I'm going to read the series and I'm going to let you know what I think about it. I said, I'm going to find you and I'm going to let you know. And he was like, oh, okay. And he's like, wait, really? I said, yeah. So I was over there the other day, popped in on him, told him I was through the first book. So we are trying to keep those relationships even because I feel that even them just knowing that there is a teacher out there, an adult, who wants them to be successful outside of their family, you know, somebody who's a part of the school system. So we're trying to keep those relationships alive as much as we can.
Yeah, because I think it's so very important because of doing all this work and self-discovery. And you don't want them, you want them to feel, continue to feel, you know, experiencing that same type of engagement and that same level of not being so fearful about using their native language, that it's an asset. And that's so important for our students is to feel that it's not a disability, but an asset to speak and be bilingual or trilingual. And so that's so very important and to risk, which is what I think you've really done is you've talked, you're taking the whole child and doing something for the whole child. It's great.
We also had kids, though, in our class specifically, I know of who went to the same school and they were in the same ELD program together, but they didn't really work together. They didn't really know each other very well and they became very close in this program. And so I feel like too, that support now that they've, those relationships that they built amongst themselves as a group will be helpful for them too.
So are they being grouped at all at the schools? An effort?
They're in the same ELD. Depending on the ELD program setup at the school, I know at Ensign, those kids are still together. At T-Winkle, those kids are still going to be in their elective together. And then, once they hit high school, a lot of the kids at Newport Harbor will be with Neil Malkus in his class. And then in Mesa, they're usually in the same program too. So they're still around each other, at least for part of their day, and have that support.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Ms. Matoye.
My question is, do you have plans to have the faculty get together once or twice during the year to? What have you seen? What can you do? Because like you said, it's as much for the teachers and the staff as it is for the students.
Absolutely. And I think one of the things we've been talking about is how can we also get out and recruit and kind of spread the wealth? We love that people have been experienced in this program, but we also want other people to come and see what it's about and to have this kind of experience.
It's a double-edged sword, though, because you loved it so much. It's like, yes, you should do this, but then I might not be able to. So it's really a blessing, but it needs to spread. It's just a wonderful thing to catch that enthusiasm and bonding.
Mrs. Black.
Yeah, I was just going to say that are you prepared for the 78 that you, or 58 that you sent out? So if we're prepared for that this year, well, you know, because remember, engineering, if you build it, they will come.
Absolutely.
So I, you know, kudos, congratulations because, you know, it's just such a great benefit for those kids. And they're going to tell their friends about it.
Did we provide transportation?
We did.
Oh, good.
Wonderful. Annette, are you back there? I'd love to get a picture of this group so we could, with their books. I saw you walking with the big camera. Oh, you were taking it to somebody. Yeah.
You can come in the bullpen.
Come in the bowl.
Come in the bowl.
Back, back. Or right there, that works. That's our other choice.
That's our other choice, yeah. Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was really informative. And thank you for being a part of this program. Okay. Okay, our next report is on the elementary summer engineering and music program.
Yes, President Snell, Dr. Navarro, and Board again. I get the pleasure of bringing up Stacy DeBoome Howard. Two years ago, we, with your direction and support, shifted our focus for our summer support for kids onto enrichment in the sciences and the arts. And I've asked Stacy and her team to share some of the growth and experiences kids have had over the last two years with that.
Thank you, John. Good evening, President Snell and Board of Education, Directors, and Executive Cabinet and guests in the back. Thank you very much for letting us come tonight and share with you about summer engineering and summer music. In my previous hat, I had the opportunity and the privilege to serve and help with this program. Not run it, but help support Diana and Scott to my left, who will go into great detail about both programs. But it was probably one of the highlights of the year every summer to be involved in these two programs. Two summers ago, we combined both programs. Actually, three summers ago, we combined both programs over at Costa Mesa. This past summer, we descended upon RAY. And summer engineering, summer music is not just a program. It's a school set up in three weeks. And it involves everybody in the district. It's a full-team effort from human resources, human resources, processing, 80 application, or 80 staff positions. IT, this year, we went online for our application, which saved hundreds and hundreds of hours of paper and trees. Nutrition services, doing breakfast and lunch for us. Transportation, we had over 300 and probably about 50 students take buses this year. Lincoln had their own bus. So they came from all zones to our site at RAY. Health services during the school year and during summer supporting us. Maintenance and operations in our warehouse. The warehouse must bring over pallets upon pallets of materials to set up the school and then take them back right after. The issue, we ran into a little glitch because air conditioning. So then they ended up storing everything for us. So we were very thankful for their support. And then the whole Ed Services team supporting to help get this off and running. I would like to introduce Diana Thompson, who will be going into the Summer Engineering Academy.
Thank you, Stacy. And thank you very much for inviting me to speak about summer engineering. It's one of my favorite things to talk about. Whenever I'm up in Sacramento or at a county meeting, I'm always telling other educators how wonderful Newport Mesa School District is in supporting elementary science. We go above and beyond. And I'm always so proud and excited to share what we do here. So this year, we, let's see if I can do this. We had over 400 students within Newport Mesa, grades one through seven, from every school, all zones. We had 42 Newport Mesa teachers. And this year, it was very exciting because we had, most of them were full-time, regular teachers.
Oh, that's right.
And they would pair up from their school site, from like Newport Dell, two of them, and they wanted to co-teach together. So it was very exciting. In the past, we had to like recruits part-time or substitute. So this year, the word is spreading that so many teachers want to do it now that we couldn't hire teachers who had taught in the past. So they were a little disappointed. But we were really thrilled with the teachers we got. In that 42 were seven coaches or lead teachers. Us is at RAY. And we also had a bunch of volunteers, high school volunteers. Call me, email me. So they were just wonderful. They came in and did robots with the kids and technology and met each other and worked together. And, oh, I went to that elementary school and just, it was a great experience. Then they get to put that on their college application. And so that helped. We have two goals for summer engineering. The first one is to provide professional development for our teachers. And the second goal is for the enrichment for science for our students. And this is where Newport Mesa is very unique. When I talk to other districts around the state, they'll have a summer program for their students, but not really any professional development. So when I tell them, oh, we can do the PD too. And then they get to learn it and then they get to teach it. And so it's a really great aspect of our program and makes it very unique. In terms of professional development, we have formal training and informal. The formal is with our coaches. We learned the engineering is elementary, which is a curriculum from the Museum of Science in Boston. Very fun curriculum. That's where we got our pallets full of kits. And then we also did our California curriculum, which is called Environmental Education Initiative Curriculum, which is a free curriculum that our teachers can use. And it talks about NGSS, but also the environment And it talks about NGSS, but also the environment and how important the environment is, especially here in California. Our informal PD is our team teaching, our co-teaching. This has been very powerful and one of the best parts for our teachers because they get to finally see their co-teacher teach, share, collaborate, give feedback right away. So every day, all the time, they have that development informally, too. Curriculum, here's some pictures of our little engineers in action. We've got some bridges going on, looking for strength. And then we have sound testing, and that's one of our teachers there, Kenny. And then we have flying technologies for our older kids. And this is all from the Museum of Science in Boston. Technology, and this is where I would love to thank Career and College Readiness. Michael Vossen, every year, he provides some funding for us. He says, oh, Diana, I've got some extra money. And I say, oh, great, thank you, thank you, thank you. So that allows us to buy some Osmos for our kids, the iPads, and they do coding with their little bricks in front of them, especially our younger ones. We bought some Ozobots with the money. This is also a little robot that is coding with color and signals. And then we do our traditional coding on Chromebooks. Feedback, this is what is very important to me, to know that it's successful. And so I asked on the teacher evaluation, how was your knowledge before you participated in C for science and NGSS? And as you can see, about 85% had little or some knowledge. And then after the three weeks of professional development and teaching, it went way up. And even very knowledgeable went up close to 50%. So now they feel confident and excited to teach science in their classrooms. Also in the evaluation, I had a couple of teachers leave comments how they wanted to connect with the FOS books and integrate with Wonders, and they were so excited and couldn't wait to teach the lessons and the curriculum in their classrooms. And to me, that was telling me we met our goal. When they're excited to be there every day and can't wait to be there in September. So I'd like to thank the board very, very much for all your support the past, what, 15, 20 years for this program, but especially for the last few years because it has been a new curriculum, new changing, and without your support, we couldn't have done it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, but thank you for your support. I'd like to go ahead and introduce Scott.
A man that needs no introduction.
Ready for Letterman.
Diana has done an amazing job. And just being able to be a teacher on special assignment is an honor for me in my life and my career and being able to work with people like her and Stacy and Russell and everyone else and John. It's a, it's a real pleasure. And one of the neat things that I want to point out, we all, we talk, you know, STEM is very important, it's all STEM. But the arts are here as well, thanks to your support, and so we are STEAM. We are STEAM, and that is the future, project-based learning. And we embody that in the arts, and we complement our colleagues in the sciences and robotics and all these manipulative areas. That's what the arts do. We put into practice our art and we refine our art. And this opportunity to do it in the summer makes such a difference to our students and our staff and our community. So I want to thank you for that. And I will point out, my colleagues at the post-secondary level and this other wonderful secondary reading program is doing exactly that. You'll see people who are knowledgeable and see what motivates students to return to school and be successful, you will see them integrating the arts and they'll do it organically. So having said all that, thank you for your support. I'm going to talk about what summer music has done, what our goals are, and moving forward. So just briefly to describe, there were 10 music teachers, who taught 10 classes, to students in grades, entering grades four through seven from our entire district. So there was student representation from all of our zones, and not one student was turned away. Here are the three major goals, as I see them, for the Summer Music Academy. Teachers are supporting students primarily. Number one, it's always students-centered. Instruments, their abilities, musical literacy specifically, and developing leadership in our students in the area of the arts. And then teachers supporting teachers and learning from one another. So there's actually a professional development opportunity. We're building relationships, which is what it's all about. And then overall, building the arts education community as a whole. And if you look at this quote from this amazing students from the Adams Orchestra, who had his experience during the summer, look what he says. Makes me excited to come back to orchestra during the school year. That is powerful. And what Diana is doing and what I'm lucky to be a part of is exactly that. We want to motivate students into the fall to progress into their elementary schools and progress into the middle schools. So let's start with our focus on supporting students on the instruments. First of all, we want them to have access to instruments. And then we want to have time with them to develop their skills on those specific instruments. I have a picture of Deborah Granger, the wonderful principal at Kaiser Elementary School here, and unfortunately, I didn't get a picture with her and her fantastic music teacher, Carolyn Hansen. But there's been so much leadership in the area of strings. We've maintained our focus on concert band, and strings has been growing to the point where the same level of staffing was needed to support the level of interest by these students because of leadership like this. In 2006, I believe it was, this lady with her PTA and her music teacher purchased the first string bass that I was aware of at the elementary level since I've been employed here. And now, and you know, we've been doing what we can to get violas going, we've talked about that. This year, if you look behind her, those are 10 string basses that have been purchased by families, PTAs, summer music donations, and et cetera, so that we gradually are able to provide access. First, we have to have access to the instrument. And the same thing with violas, those have increased. So thankfully, for those instruments and the leadership that you're seeing all over in our district, you're seeing students like this, not only having access, but also developing their abilities because of the increased time. Every day, we're able to work with these students each day and focus in on them and pay closer attention to their progress and support them through teachers and through high school volunteers. And look what this student says. I love that. Perfect my boehold.
I know.
That's great. Hopefully, we'll still have something to teach her next year.
Yes.
So supporting students with music literacy, so not just access and ability to learn the skill in the instrument, but actually become literate so that they're able to read in this discipline when they reach middle school. That is so critical. And because of your ongoing support, students take their leadership by introducing songs, discussing their learning, presenting it to you, not just as a memorized concert, but actually demonstrating their learning. They take those things that they've learned and they bring it back to their school sites in the fall. And if you'll look, in 2016, 17, we had 38 students who were in intermediate orchestras at the elementary level, okay? Thirty-eight. That's a start. And we're getting time and people are being inspired to do more. Look what happened last year.
Wow.
That is a testament to the sustained Summer Music Academy, for it continuing. Students are gradually getting ready to learn more challenging and more interesting music because of their increased literacy in the discipline. And look at another Adams student, what he said. I feel confident to play whatever music Mrs. Duffin puts in front of us.
Wow.
I mean, that, we talk about the effective filter, if anyone remembers those? The fear when you're learning a new language and that stuff goes up and we, in the arts, bring out play, and all those filters go away. They go away. All of a sudden, it's a song, it's a fun song, and they're singing in English. The next thing you know, they're developing learning by acting things out, drawing poems. And it's, this is so critical, the area of literacy. So here is some literacy that was developed in our intermediate orchestra over the summer. I'm just going to play you a little quick clip. It's okay.
You have to remember, that's elementary.
This is all elementary, except there were some high school students. There's a high school student at the base of the screen on the right-hand side, just here playing violin. And then I mentioned the string bass and the viola, which you'll see in the second row there, and cello, there's chelly, as we would say, up front. And the string bass next to that student is another high school student. So again, the leadership from our secondary is building leadership into our students, and here, we're talking about it. So we're developing leadership from the high school level into our elementaries and the elementaries back to their school sites. Listen to what Mrs. Duffin at Adams said. It's not just the skill, it's the behavior. It's, I can, I can elevate the expectation for myself, and they have the confidence because they've actually done it. So this leadership piece is critical. And then teachers supporting teachers. So we're supporting students, we're, teachers are supporting each other. If you look at Rebecca Heron's quote, she's referencing Carolyn Hansen, who I mentioned moments ago. Carolyn has been in the district a little bit longer, they're both string teachers, and Rebecca's excited to learn from her. Then look at Thomas Shiskowski's quote. He's been in the district for a while, and Mr. McFadden has as well, but not as long as Mr. S. And now they're in band, and he's learning from them. So irregardless of your discipline or the amount of time of service, it's wonderful to see people being willing and excited to learn from one another and take their ideas back with their students. So it's a great community, building the arts community. We're fortunate in this district that we have invested in our Arts Commission, we have a strategic plan for the arts. One of those areas which a number of you serve on and support us every year to do is building partnerships. And our Summer Music Academy is part of this community of arts education, as you were hearing the Secondary Reading Academy referred to earlier, and with STEAM. And in this area, in the arts specifically relating to summer music, we have the enrichment from the city of Costa Mesa. The Smart Camp, where you have jazz band, beginning band, intermediate strings, there's also offerings in visual art, multiple medias and visual art, theater and dance. And we partnered also with Orange County Music and Dance to provide a field trip to their facility and so they could work on these new facilities. So these relationships, the building of these relationships long-term results in better opportunities for students, and which is helping our community, is bettering our community. So I want to say thank you to the board and the cabinet, superintendent, and everyone who makes this a matter of our culture, so that we are doing project-based learning, which is actually discipline-specific in the arts. And we want to continue and grow that. So I think, grateful to be a part of that process with these wonderful people, and thank you for your support.
We would thank you.
And there's probably impossible to fit the amount of people in this room who have supported this program. And Stacy referred to this earlier with the amount of departments that are there, but it's impossible to express the amount of work that the warehouse did for us this summer. I really have to make a mention, I would be remiss to not say how hard they worked for us this summer. And they're wonderful professionals. So thank you very much for your support, and we look forward to continuing this culture.
Okay, wait, stay up here, we still, we have questions. Ms. Matoye, first.
And before I forget, which I already did, there will be online registration in March.
Yay!
Okay.
Early, early.
Excellent. I'll do it in reverse order. How many high school volunteers did you have working with you?
I would have to get back to you on that, but I can tell you that...
Like two or three in every class, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And this was a really strong year for strings, as you can see, including in our volunteers. So I can get you specific numbers, but I can tell you, this is one of our strongest years. And we had to have multiple levels of support to record their hours and get them tallied and everything out to them. So we're very grateful for their leadership.
And in addition to their leadership, it brought their leadership skills back to their own bands. It also gave a preview to the elementary students, look what you, where you can go when they say, oh, look how they play. And even more, because they're older and work a little harder, they can see, well, I didn't play much, I was only two years longer than you because that's when our school got strings. So it's just such a, there's nothing, I bubble over in speaking about...
I had an opportunity for a student who was a high school volunteer this year. She had a student who introduced her to her mom and dad. The high school student started off in summer music. And so she got all emotional telling me. So this is an ongoing building process.
It is. And I want to thank you, Diana and Stacy, for continuing the program when you mentioned how long it had been in there. It has evolved into such a phenomenal program. It's just, it is typically science. It just moves and grows, and as the technology adapts, it's adapted with it. Thank you very, very much. You know, it's near and dear to my heart.
Mrs. Yelsey.
Yeah, I just, I had the opportunity to visit early on and then the last day, and especially with the music, just to see the difference in the, it was only three weeks. So they had a very short time, and they were at all, every day, and they were at all levels. Some of them came in not knowing anything, some of them had been there three, four years. But just to see the difference by the end, when they all got together in the final orchestra show, it was fabulous. It really, they did a remarkable job, and I think it's a testament to all the teachers you have working with you. And in the science, I was just impressed by the level of activities these kids were doing. We're talking first graders who hadn't been in first grade yet, they just finished kindergarten, and they're doing these technology programs. It was, it was pretty amazing.
Pretty amazing.
And the teachers loved it. And one of the things that was not on there that you posted, what the teachers liked about it, one of them that they told me as I walked through, they really liked the team teaching.
Oh, yes.
Because they could leave and go to the bathroom when they wanted to.
They didn't have to wait.
They didn't have to call up to the office to get somebody. But they, they all just seemed to really enjoy the experience of teaching.
We used to say that it was summer, summer, summer science and engineering. It was, it was an actual lifelike classroom representation, two teachers and all the equipment you could possibly want, much like their day-to-day classroom experience. Not, you know, if only.
Mrs. Flor.
Fabulous, fabulous, fabulous. How many students were act, we have 440 in the engineering. How many students, Scott, did you have in the art?
We had 179 who completed.
179, amazing, amazing. So literally, it was a school. It's the size of a elementary school in our district. So I'm very excited. What's the possibilities of expanding the music into some of the other performing arts and visual arts? Dance, for example, is there an opportunity?
I would love to do that. I would love to see that happen as part of this program, obviously. I will never say no to that.
Okay.
Right now, we're fortunate, like I said, to be partnering with the city. But if there, if there's funding for the staffing, believe me, I know teachers would love to do it, so.
Yeah, I'm sure, I know that there's teachers that would be very...
I will always say yes, as much as I can, and I'd be happy to support that.
Great. Thank you so much. Absolutely marvelous, marvelous, marvelous.
And the cooperation with the city for the science, the Costa Mesa Fire Department came out so that they could do the egg drops, which is kind of nice because we were always very creative with egg dropping. And it's always nice to have professionals dropping those eggs.
Well, again, and since this...
Wasn't there a story about, didn't you shave your beard for one of the...
Oh, this was a good year, it was only the beard, thank goodness.
Okay, one, one more story from Mr. Fitzpatrick here. It's a tradition that I let my hair grow in the spring, you've probably noticed it. And when each group has a challenge that they have to do, and so like I said, they had more complicated music this year. And each section has a specific area that I know they need to work on, each section or each level of different groups. And so I pinpoint that by talking with the teacher, and then I have the kids play it for me. And then I say, well, I'll listen and I'll make my decision, and I come back to them a couple of times during the program, and then I give them some warnings and of what the expectation is. And then the day before the concert, I'll listen again, and I don't announce if they get it or not. And if they show up to the concert and my head is shaved, they got it. And if it's not, they didn't. And two years ago, I was completely bald and shaved my face as well. And this year, I kept my wonderful hair and only shaved my beard. But yes, that is one of my little things I do to motivate the students, and they get a kick out of it, and so do I.
And since this is the third year technically, it's eligible for a Golden Bell. So we should start thinking about, for submitting it for next year because it will have, it will have completed its third year, and that will make it eligible for a Golden Bell.
Okay.
Especially in the partnership area.
So Annette, are you back there?
Another photo?
Yeah, another photo because summer program photo, yeah. With our students.
Turn around.
Turn around. We don't want to be in it. Thank you. Wonderful presentation. Thank you. Okey-dokey. So on to informational items, Dr. Navarro.
No, that's, it's moved.
Oh, sorry?
It is moved. To precede community input.
What?
Yes, yes. Oh, I see, got it, okay.
Okay. Before we go off of the topic about the music program, Scott mentioned that the city supports that program, and Mrs. Flor mentioned how it might be a good partnership application for the Golden Bell. I do want to recognize the city. They've been a partner ever since Scott started this project in the summer. They've been paying our music teachers for part of the day. And our music teachers have to go and get employed by the city, and I appreciate they take that extra step because they're not our employees at that time. And go ahead, Scott.
I was just going to say, they help with dance and theater and visual art.
You just, you have to talk, because everything is translated, yeah.
Yeah. I definitely want to echo that, and Dr. Baromash has been amazingly supportive, and it's been all over the place, the level of support and interest. And the city does support music with these activities that students can continue to in the afternoon, or do science and then do beginning in the afternoon if they choose. It is really important that I say that Kirby Piazza has been an amazing leader in the other disciplines and getting started, well, with dance and theater and doing amazing things in visual art. And I say getting started because I know he's always growth-minded like me. And the city has been supplying those instructors as well.
And sports.
And they do run our sports, they do support, fund the entire sports after, afternoon sports program that's free to all of our students, or, you know, any, anyone that lives anywhere around here.
It's not a either, it's both, which I love about the arts and sports.
And this brings up the fabulous partnership with the city of Costa Mesa, but I think it's time for us to put pressure on the city of Newport Beach. There's no, there's no reason, because we are a unified district, that the city of Newport Beach step up and help us run this program also because there are kids from as far away as Newport Coast, Lincoln, all of those kids from, from the Newport Beach schools are attending these programs. And they can do something to help us. And we're not talking about, you know, chump change, this is about over $150,000 that they contribute, the Costa Mesa City contributes to this program. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to really put the pressure on, and, you know, Karen and Judy and I, you know, I think we should need to be just really committed to getting that done and having them...
Sounds like an action step for the Arts Commission.
You got it. You got it.
This is Yelsey.
Well, no, I think it would be great, and I think they would be interested in contributing. The difference is, in Newport Beach, they have a very robust summer program. I mean, it's in all disciplines, and they use all their city staff and resources to run that program, so.
That's absolutely true, but now that, my understanding is, they also have their own separate, the city now has the Newport Beach Foundation, which is part of the city, it's their own 501(c)(3). So they certainly...
I don't think that's under the Department of Rec, of Recreation.
It's not Department of Rec, it's under the city, it's their 501(c)(3) from the city of Newport Beach, so.
Well, I'm very grateful for the city of Newport Beach, too, that we've done great things.
Money coming in would be great, from anywhere.
Thank you.
Yep, they do have it.
And then to follow up, I just want to tell you, I'm very proud of how hard the Ed Division has worked to make sure we had a smooth opening, but also to make sure that our staffing is appropriate. And we put extra pressure on the elementary division because we tell, we, we've worked out, well, they've worked out some principles that they think are important. Not only the ratio of students is important, but also making sure that we don't have combo classes in elementary school.
Are you mean for the, for this coming school year?
For this coming school year. So like last year, I think, last year, we had one combo class. This year, Kurt's not here, but I'm pretty sure that I can tell you that we don't have any combo classes this year. And that is, that is, that is big. That is another layer to it. And I think after this year, we'll be able to report, even give you a more favorable report about class size throughout the district. We still have some bubbles, you know, kids do not come in like eggs in a carton of 12, they don't come that way to us, so we have some bubbles to work out. So we'll be doing that over the next three, four weeks, once everything settles down. But pretty much, and you get the reports, and you can see that our class sizes are very, are very favorable, and we continue to have that commitment to it. So I'm very proud of all the hard work that the Ed Division did with all the principals to make sure they're offering, we're offering all the right courses and that all the students are in appropriate classes and that they're not in mixed grades. And I know that Ms. Matoye has been a mixed-grade teacher before, combo class.
Lots of fun.
So we try, we try to avoid that, and I think that's especially...
It's better for the students.
It is, and I think it's even more important with the incredible resources that our teachers now have in, with the recent adoptions of instructional materials. So even more than ever, I think it's really key to make sure that we don't have combo classes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So moving on to community input.
This, this is an opportunity for the public to address the board on consent calendar, agenda items, or on non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Board Policy 9323, each speaker will have three minutes to cover one or multiple topics, and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers, and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board, staff, or members of the public may request that a specific item on consent be moved to the discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on the consent calendars. Depending upon the nature of the comments, the board president or superintendent may respond, or the president may call upon board members for brief comments, questions, or clarification, provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information, or request the superintendent to report back to the board at a subsequent meeting concerning the matter. However, in compliance with board policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video that is posted as a courtesy on our website at www.nmusd. When addressing the board, it is helpful that you state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Robert Tyler.
I'm Robert Tyler. I'm an attorney. I represent Gina Nick. She's a individual running for school board in Area 4. And Gina has a child who's enrolled in first grade here within the school district. Somehow, her child's personal information was released to some third parties. We're not sure how that happened. This information unfortunately was published in Stu News and effectively used to attack Ms. Nick's candidacy.
Excuse me. We're, as you're an attorney, we don't, we're not, we can't have you speak about anything to do with the election, if, if you.
This doesn't have to, this only has to do with the election because a student's private information was released. And this is a time for public comment, and this is completely inappropriate for you to take my time away when I have an opportunity to address this.
Could you stop the clock? I'm sorry. I will give you your time, but I just, I would like some direction on this, if you don't mind. Is that okay?
I, I do mind, but you can go ahead and do it.
I'll give you your time back.
You need to do, sure.
If I. I'm not quite sure how much time I took.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, is, so you gave him like 20 seconds more or something?
Okay.
I just want to, I want to make sure you do not mention anything that has to do with the election or candidacy. Okay?
Well, that's, cat's out of the bag.
Well, just don't do it anymore.
And the fact of what happened, I, what's, what's concerning is the fact that he, that an individual who is running for office, that her child's information was released out of a file that's, that never should have happened. It's illegal, it's unlawful, violates the student's right to privacy. And frankly, I'm here to ask you as trustees, who are responsible for protecting our kids, for protecting the kids in the state, your school district, and their privacy, to find out and come to the bottom of what happened. Why did this child's information get released? And why is it? I, I can tell you it's being used to attack the candidacy of this individual. You can read the Stu News, you can read emails that have been circulated, and we'll be filing a complaint with the Orange County Board of Education. And any public official using their position to influence an election is wholly inappropriate, and it's illegal. And so we're filing this administrative complaint with the Orange County Board of Education, and we're asking that you do your own internal investigation without the necessity of having the Orange County Board or the State Department of Ed come to you and demand that this investigation be done, because I'm sure most of you are sitting here saying, this never should have happened. And I, I would suspect that you agree with me, and I'm hoping that you get to the bottom of it, and to make sure this doesn't happen again, because it's, this is America, and, you know, we've seen things like this happening on a national level right now. We don't need to have this kind of stuff to happen at a local school board.
Mr. Tyler, I'm going to ask you to step out with Mr. Drake, so we can get some more information and more details from you regarding the information that you're, that you're declaring has been, has been released.
Sure.
So we're going to have, have you to step out there with Mr. Drake, and so he can start finding out exactly in detail what you're talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, Mr. Caldecott.
My name is John Caldecott. I'm a former, former employee of the district for 10 years. I'm, I'm here to keep the public aware of the continuing concerns with the lack of transparency by the school board and superintendent. And I think everybody knows about the Mariner Gold Ribbon Report that has been in the court for a year and a half to force you to release the report. There's about 300 pages coming out, hopefully in the next few days. That's not why I'm here. I've made four requests for Vicky Snell's emails, and I think we all read the paper. We all know about the California Public Records Act, and about the use of district email and that, and those public records. So far, those four requests have resulted in not one email at all being accessible. And I, I think it's important to note that in the last district response, the district suggested and required that I pay for the district's attorney to redact the records of Ms. Snell. Now, I have to tell you, that is simple mockery of the law. That is ridiculous. This district has never asked or required that to occur. I would like to challenge Vicky Snell. There's no reason to spend any legal fees on any of these public records requests, yet you continue to do it. Vicky Snell, direct the superintendent to release your records. Incumbent board members who have ever said the word transparency, ask the superintendent to release the emails. Shar Matoya, you've had your records released. Those are all on my website. My request is on the website, caldecottinfo.com. Who is the voice against the waste of taxpayers' money for these cases that should be released instantaneously? No district spends this kind of money to prevent the release of public information time after time by the court. Who is the voice of transparency and accountability? Is there one here? I don't think so. Who is the voice of spending money on student resources? You talk about students first, and yet there is a lot of waste in this district about legal fees and frivolous ways of preventing the, the public from understanding and accessing how this government runs. I suggest to you that I will be back with a new board, asking them to investigate what is going on here with public records. Who is stalling public records? Who is preventing the release? Where are all these attorney's fees going? Who is it benefiting? Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Navarro?
Well, first of all, I just, from what I remember, I don't believe we have attorney speaking before us a second time. Well, first, my gentleman was an attorney, but this gentleman is not an attorney, is not aware that, that public entities are protected from requests that are overly burdensome and costly to the district, and that public entities have a right to, to tell a requister that this is an expensive request, and that we will need to recover our costs for this. This is not the first time we've informed a pub, someone from the public about this. Sometimes these public records requests are very broad, result in having to look at thousands and thousands of emails. I can tell you that every member that's sitting at the dais has had to go through a thousand emails at one time, going over some of these public requests. And we do have an obligation. We do have an obligation to protect the privacy. A member of the public that's writing, written an email doesn't expect their name and identity be released, so we have to look at that. And again, you know, I, it's, it's surprising to me that someone who was in our profession has abdicated all of their, their responsibility to ethics of the profession, because we have an obligation to protect the privacy of our employees. This issue about the report and the investigation, we've said from the beginning, we have done everything we can to protect the confidential rights of our employees who spoke privately to investigators and expected that to be held in a confidential manner. If the legal courts tell us to do otherwise, we will do otherwise. The final ruling has not come out, so it's a bit premature. The judge still has to tell us what the final ruling is. There, there have been some preliminary judgments, but we promised our staff that we would do everything in our power to protect their confidential statements, and we've done everything to keep that promise. And it's a shame that someone who used to be in that position has abdicated their former commitment to ethics and morality when it comes to running an HR department.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Can I add your comments, sir?
Okay. Moving on to consent calendar.
Do we have to move and approve before I can?
No, let's, um, why don't you move and make your amendment?
You want to move it first, and then you can amend? I'm going to, I'm going to move that we approve the consent calendar, and I would like to comment on Item 16B13 and 16D3 before we vote.
16B13?
B as in baby, B as in boy, and D as in David. Beta. I don't know the.
13B, six, 16B13, what's the second one?
16D as in David, three.
Now, do you want to just comment on it, or do you want to move it to discussion?
I'd like to just comment on it.
Okay.
Okay, move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead and speak to yours.
Perfect. Item 16B3 says to approve the iChinese Reader online software for the dual immersion program at College Park. I just wanted to comment how exciting it is to have a Mandarin program that is now K through third grade with a bullet, because we know every year we'll expand it till it's K6, and that what these iChinese readers are, they're eBooks in Chinese, so that we can offer a more robust literature program to complement the dual immersion program without having to buy numerous books in Chinese and storage. So it was just an exciting thing that caught my eye. And Item 16D3 is approving the memorandum of understanding between our district and Project Hope Alliance. And Project Hope Alliance has been such a wonderful partnership at Newport Harbor High School. And for those of you that are not familiar, it is a program to assist our homeless youth without exposing them as being part of that population, because that is often something students want. Students in high school and middle school want to blend in and be part of the crowd. They don't want to stand out. And this program helps them with, without making them stand out. And the success so far at Newport Harbor and Enson is that 40% of the students have exhibited, exhibited improvement in academics by their GPA. They've improved their attendance, two and a half, 55% of them have improved their attendance. Their frequently tardy has gone down by 77%. Their internal assets, how they feel about themselves, has gone up in double digits of 70 and 80% in self-esteem, ability to deal with a crisis, becoming more independent, skills that they can use to, for a future job, and that they've learned teamwork and leadership and conflict management, which just augments the summer language program. And Project Hope Alliance has done that. And one of the wonderful things they've done is, one of their methods of doing this is providing mentorship for the students that follows them out of school and into college. So they continue to check, to see how are you doing and has this helped? And my joy is that it is now being expanded to include Costa Mesa High School, and I know that we're, we have plans in place to grow it even further to Estancia. So I just wanted to comment on what a great program this is, and how that one small pocket of our population and their mental health and their ability to function and perform and grow academically and as people, it's just such a wonderful program, and I wanted to bring it to the attention and not just have it mush in with the rest of the consent calendar.
Wonderful.
But I don't, ask me how I really feel.
We want to mush it in, yeah. Okay, so the approval of consent calendar has been moved by Ms. Black and seconded by Ms. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and now we move on to the superintendent's report.
I do want to acknowledge again the hard work of our, of the assessment office, and that soon you'll be provided some data that I think will be very relevant to the, the priorities that we set before the, the district, and will codify and put in, into real-life terms what things should look like. So I'm really excited about what we'll be able to present to you. I also want to tell you that I'm very impressed by Mr. Lee Sung, not only in the work he's done with the safety, but pretty soon you'll have check-in systems at all your schools and here at the district office. Some incredible work done by our, our Facilities Department. We talked a little bit last week about it, but to redesign those offices so it's only one entrance into a school. And lastly, I think it's important to, to thank the board for their courage in putting forward these programs that were non-traditional to a degree. The science, summer, the summer engineering program, I know that Mr. Lee Sung came to you and said, we have kind of a remedial program, and we think kids will develop more if we do enrichment, and you took a chance on, on allowing that. The result is the summer engineering program. You asked and supported our efforts to expand the summer music academy, and you see what Mr. Fitzpatrick has been able to do with that. And it's bigger than any of us, I guess, I never had an idea that it would be as big as it is now, and I think it's going to get bigger. So again, I think these are all the results of forward-looking thinking and putting your money behind the priorities that you give us, and we really appreciate that focused, focused effort. And the fact that you challenged all the time with the next step. What's the next level? How can we make this better? Without that, we, you know, and I think you have a staff that pushes itself, and, but yet it's nice to have that partnership with the board, and we do take your lead and try, try to deliver the best product we can for our students.
Great. Thank you. Okay, on to discussion action calendar. 18A, adopt resolution 060918, GAN limit for 201718, and estimated GAN limit for 201819. Mr. Trader.
Good evening. So in 1979, Paul GAN passed, he was a co-author for Proposition 13, and in that time period, Proposition 4 was passed, and this limited California government spending to inflation and growth. And so this is known as GAN limit, and we run through a calculation that essentially determines how much our revenues are subject to the GAN limit. And this year, for 201718, we exceeded our GAN limit by $12,183,000, which is a good thing. That's, recognizes that we've, the district revenues have, have been very well in 201718 and done very well. However, this does not count towards our, how do you say, GAN limit. We, we simply write a letter to the state indicating that this amount is going to be apportioned to the state's GAN limit. And, and we do that because we receive categorical, categorical funding from the state. And so this, this increase is really kind of meaningless, it just, we have to notify the state that we've exceeded the limit and that we're going to apportion this $12.1 million to the state's GAN limit. I hope that was. I hope that was helpful.
We still get to keep the money.
Yes.
Yes.
We're not, we're giving it to the, no, we're not giving, we're keeping the money.
But that's what the hard thing to explain, you know?
We're keeping the money.
To new board members, you know, I kept trying to figure out.
We're keeping the money.
What do you mean?
So move adoption of resolution 060918, GAN limit for 2017-18, and estimated GAN limit for 2018-19.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Ms. Black, seconded by Ms. Matoye. Roll call.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Mr. Davenport-Sapsin, Ms. Franco?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Yessen?
Yes.
Okay, 18B, one of my favorite...
Exciting.
Things of the evening. Authorized to negotiate and award Estancia High School Aquatic Center project. Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, President Snell. I'm very pleased to have this item to present to you this evening, because it means that we have found a contractor who can build the pool for us at Estancia High School within the budget that we believed was appropriate for the project and that you had approved for the project. So it's, it's been a very busy few months working to talk to contractors, to find ways to do this, but this particular pool designer has a very good approach to the project and then has necessitated that we hire an architect to construct, say, for example, the restrooms that go with the pool, that are necessary for the pool, and that is the part that you see with Westburg &amp; White Architects. And with your approval tonight, that will allow us to proceed with that design work so that we can complete the rest of it, get it to DSA, get the rest of the contracts awarded, and get it built and ready for students in early 2020, as we promised.
Early 2021?
Twenty.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, 2019 is very close. It's only four months, five months away. We can't build a pool that fast.
I know. Okay. Really?
It's like we blinked.
No, wait, okay. So, construction will hopefully begin in January of 2019.
Construction won't likely begin in January, but...
I mean, early 2019.
In, in, in early 2019, in the latter part of the school year, we will be looking at, and we've spoken with the principal about the swim program and how we can accommodate that, but likely at the end of the school year, they will need to use another pool so that we can take the existing pool down, begin the construction, so that we can construct the pool through the very end of next school year, the summer, fall, and then our goal is to have it ready as soon as possible in early 2020.
Okay, I thought it was going to be ready for September 2019.
Boy, is that a good...
Yeah, that, that wasn't, that wasn't one of the options that we had to get ready.
I want it.
I, I understand.
Can you give us a, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I did my own, I did my own light.
Ms. Matoye.
I had mine up first, and so you're going to ask my question.
Will you give us a, and I want to say in time, a penciled-in timeline, a timeline in pencil, knowing what I know about construction, I would never hold you to anything with two rainy seasons, that we may actually get some rain someday, and that would slow things down enough, but could we have a penciled timeline of, we think we'll be done here, we think we'll be done there? I know...
Yes, my best pencil for you for the moment is that we cannot wait all the way until school ends next year and have it, and have any chance of having it ready for the spring swim season of 2020.
Right.
So therefore...
The pool is over here, and the old pool is over there, how long can the old pool still have water in it?
So in order to have the new pool, which actually does have to interrupt the existing pool because of the utilities that are there, we will need to take the existing pool out of operation sometime in the latter part of this school year. That will give us time to do the demolition that's necessary and for the contractors to begin digging the new pool and constructing the new pool so that it can be ready less than 12 months later for use at the school.
So with any luck at all, they'll be, hmm, one year of swimming disrupted, or within, one semester?
A little, a little bit more than one semester in that we, and we've spoken with the principal about the likelihood and our hope and our expectation we're working toward. We want to be able to ask the swim program to finish its competition possibly for the spring semester at one of our other schools so we can get under construction, because the sooner we get under construction next spring, the sooner we'll get it completed. And if at all possible, we would like to have it done within less than 12 months from when we start.
And I know our principals are very collaborative. You guys, I just, I commend them for working through these tough issues, which then become emotional for kids and parents, but from the professional standpoint, they, we all know, everybody got a pool, everybody had to move around, everybody gets a theater, everybody has to move around, we have to share sometimes, and it's tough after kindergarten.
Mrs. Flor?
Yeah, and I think it's important to recognize that, one, we entered into a different process this year, this year in terms of, of the pool. And two is that this is Division of State Architects. I mean, they are, what's the backlog? How soon can you get this sucker out of DSA, other than walking, I guess you could drive, which we've done, we've driven down to San Diego and sort of parked ourselves down there, but we're at the mercy of the Division of State Architect to approve the project. And we have to still have to have the design, and so it's all sorts of, that's why it's pushing everything back. So we're, I know that you guys are working really as hard as you possibly can, but, you know, we can get everything ready by, say, mid-January, February of next year with the design, but it's going to be up to the Division of State Architect how, how soon they will approve that project so that we can actually start demolition.
You understand the process well.
Right. So I mean, I mean, do we realistically believe, the question is, you, are you, you're confident that between now and the end of the year, January, we will have a design and plans? Not division, but...
I'm sorry, we...
Design, it'll be designed, ready to go.
Well, you mentioned specific months. Our, my, my number-one objective is going all the way to last year in December, when we were talking about this. The objective was keep this project on schedule for it to be open in the spring of 2020. And that is what we have been working diligently to do, and yes, the Division of the State Architect's process can be time-consuming, but we believe that we can meet the schedule of having the pool ready for students in the early part of 2020, as we had hoped.
Okay. Mr. Holt, do you have anything you want to add, or?
Surprise.
I just like to thank you.
You have to come up to the mic, Mike, because it's...
Sorry.
The problem is that we're on...
I can hear you, but the people at home can hear you.
And the people who are translating for us.
That's good. I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to thank the board, Mr. Holcomb and his staff, for, for their leadership and support through this process, as well as thank our community for, for their patience and trust during this endeavor.
Absolutely. Thank you for...
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so, any more questions?
Move approval to authorize to negotiate and award Estancia High School Aquatic Center project.
Second. Oops, sorry, Judy.
Okay, so it is moved by Mrs. Flor and seconded by Mrs. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 18C, and we're back to Mr. Trader.
Well, thank you.
Move approval. Sorry.
Pleasure to be here.
He was.
So, board members, Dr. Navarro, and cabinet and guests, let's talk a little bit about...
Berth, your favorite thing.
Exciting topic, unaudited actials. So unlike, unlike budget, actials are real. They're the real thing. And this is a very important part of your governance role, is to ensure that the actials are reported to you so that you know what actually happened. So, for example, way back, let's get in the wayback machine, a year ago or so, we were looking at, hey, what are we going to do for the year? What are the budget assumptions? We come to you with a budget, you approve a budget, well, now we need to discuss, well, what actually really happened. And so that's important. So we'll talk about what unaudited actials are, we'll talk about the general fund and some next steps. And so let's start with, first of all, the why. This is required by education code, that we come to you, the governing board, on or before the 15th of September, to have you approve these unaudited actials. And we will show you the financial status as of June 30th, and upon approval, we will submit these actials to your auditors that report directly to you for their examination. And they will come to you in December and let you know if we did it all right or not. And so with that, then, so what has changed since June? So the state has adopted their budget, and we have prepared all of our closing entries and updated all of our beginning fund balances, and we have closed the books, they're done, there's no more changes, that's done. And then with that, then, we've taken all the unspent allocations, and we've identified, how do you say, those that we need to reserve or assign as fund balance, and we'll go through that here in just a minute. And so with that, then, let's take a look at the changes here. So from 1617 to 1718, your revenue went up 5.93%. That's about 17.3 million, and that's, that's wonderful. And then, we look at expenditure, and expenditures going up a little bit higher in terms of rate, in terms of rate than revenue, and that's about 17 million flat. That's a, that's almost, that's inspiring, to think about that. There's, you know, to someone who lives the world every day, day in and day out, that takes an awful lot of work to make that happen, so that, you know, we don't exceed revenues. And so let's, let's look at the general fund revenue. So this just kind of gives you an idea of the scope and the magnitude of this far-flung organization in which you, you govern, and that's a $308 million organization. That's, that's, that's significant and substantial. When you look at what that means in terms of a combined unrestricted and restricted general fund, you can see there that a large part of that blue section of the pie, that's your property taxes. That's mostly, it's all in property taxes, a little slice for federal, a little bit bigger slice for state, and then look at that local, the local's about the same size as the federal, which is, how do you say, an indication of the generosity of this community and the support that they have for, for the schools. And then, of course, on the unrestricted side, much more in terms of, of property tax, and you have a little, little state section that they give us for unrestricted dollars, and then local, sometimes we get some unrestricted dollars for local, too. But when you look at this in terms of the pie, just to give you an idea of the consumption or the, the total pie, the red and the blue there, that's all salaries and benefits, which...
The red and the blue.
The red and the blue. So that is, and the rest of that piece is very small, really, in, in relation to that, and it just, that tells you that it takes people to teach people. That's what, that we're really in that business. And so you heard, you know, our music coordinator, Fitzpatrick, Mr. Fitzpatrick, yes, thank you, talking about relationships and building those relationships, that's really what this is about, and it shows up in your financials. And so then, let's take a look at the expenditures, and again, you can see there the magnitude of the certificated and classified and employee benefits. And now this is interesting here. Take a look at this. So if, if you really want to know how we're doing, kind of, are we doing all right? Are we, are we being responsible, that kind of thing? Let's take a look here at the top line. The top line is year-over-year percentage growth rates in revenue, and the bottom line is year-over-year percentage of growth rates in expenditures. Now, remember, 1314, we were coming off the, kind of the, the recession, the Great Recession. You can see there, our revenues actually declined in 1314, and we had an increase of 2.5%, and that's not a good, that's not sustainable, we wouldn't want to do that. And so we've worked really hard here, you can see, we kind of still had an imbalance in 1415. 1516, we had some one-time revenue, which threw that off. 1617, still a little bit of an imbalance there in rates of growth between revenue and expenditure. And then 1718, really trying to manage those growth rates and get them aligned. And that's taken an awful lot of work on a lot of people's parts to make that happen, and you should feel really good about, about that, that we're on a sustainable trajectory in that regard. And so with that, then, we had some transfers out, and this is recognizing that you're doing an awful lot of work in the district, a tremendous amount of work. For air conditioning, almost $23 million transferred out for that. We're doing a lot, it's important, Ed Services is looking at refreshing our curriculum on a continual basis, and so we're planning for that, and so we're putting a half a million dollars beside, beside for that. And of course, Nutrition Services, you run a wonderful nutrition service program, and you contribute towards that. Workers' comp and, and other post-employment benefits funding, this is important because, which we will bring to you in a post-employment benefits report here probably before December, but this is, this is funding the obligations that the district has made to make sure that we can fulfill those obligations. And so we're being responsible in that regard to fund those. And then we made a small contribution to early childhood for their program. Now, in terms of any fund balance, and these are the components of the fund balance, you can see here that reserve for economics uncertainties is matching your 4.5%, which you set some time ago. And then we had some prepaid expenditures, and there's a stabilization reserve, about 13.4 million, which is responsible, and, and as a community-funded district, we really need to have in that regard. And then, of course, revolving cash stores and, and restricted. So, expected changes on the first interim, you're going to see some adjustments to beginning fund balances. We're going to include any of the bargaining unit agreement, agreements that we've come up with here recently, those will be folded into the first interim. You'll see some one-time adjustments, the state reduced the one-time mandated cost adjustment or allocation, and we're going to adjust that downward. And then we have some technical corrections and some adjustments that you'll see also, and we'll explain those. One of the things that you're going to notice here also, and this is something Ed Services watches very carefully, and, but we've had a long trending decline in enrollment, and this is, just, it's just something that we're cognizant of, we're planning for. You'll see this in terms of our planning and, and how we staff and how we approach the other kinds of operations that the district's running. And then pensions rates are also a concern. You can see here that the rates are moving up dramatically, and this is, this is taking a lot of effort for, for us to manage this. In 1314, pensions were about 5% of our budget. In 2021, they're going to be almost 12% of our expense budget. And so that's a, that's a concern, and we have to actively manage that and make sure that, that we manage that program, we expect it, and we, we don't let that crowd out things that it shouldn't crowd out. And so next steps, then, we'll come to you with an unaudited actials report in, in December of 2018 with the auditors, your auditors, and then you'll see a first interim budget update on that same December. We'll come into you with January's proposed budget in January of 2019, and a second interim budget update in March of 2019, and our governor's revised budget, and then, of course, estimated actials for this year. And so with that, then, we are solvent and moving. Thank you for your time.
Which one are we?
Which one are we? The shark or the goldfish?
We have a speaker for this item. I don't know if you want to go.
No, that's fine.
So, good evening, Mrs. Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, members of the public. I'm Britt Doughty, president of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. And I have some questions here. And maybe it's easier to kind of have this with Mr. Trader afterwards, but largely it's around the idea of, when we receive these actual reports and we look at what the budget was initially, and we kind of compare the two, and we see, what happens to surplus funds? You know, maybe we could describe to the public, where does it go? What is it used for? And then also, how do we reflect on building budgets for the future if we see that there's a trend for a few years, that there was some surpluses? I would like to applaud Mr. Trader and his department because there's always a surplus, which is a good thing. It means that we're appropriately spending. And if you look at it percentage-wise, you know, they're more than 90% correct, which is outstanding. So I applaud their work. I'm just looking at this from a, getting some information to the public. We're receiving this report. And then how is that used in comparing with the initial? For example, the initial budget just came out this summer. There will be an unaudited actual that will come, you know, a year from now. And then how do we compare those and use those moving forward?
Okay, Anna, your first question was about surplus funds. And the second question...
Yeah, it's just kind of a larger picture of how we compare the initial budget to the final audits. And then when there is a surplus, what is done with that surplus? That's the thing.
I thought you mentioned building or something.
Building the budgets.
Building the budget itself.
Built in, oh, okay.
Building the budgets.
I thought he meant building.
A building.
Like the construction projects. So, Mr. Trader, would you like to address his questions?
Yeah, all of those surplus, you'll see in that slide where I showed the transfers out to other funds to, for air conditioning, curriculum refreshes, those kinds of things, nutrition services. That's all shows up in there. That's essentially where some of that surplus, where all of that surplus goes.
Okay. Can I ask?
I just wanted to remind Mr. Trader and cover, but because we're a community-funded district, we just received our letter today from the county approving the budget for this coming year. And because we're a community-funded budget, every time that we get that letter, the county reminds us that we will not be bailed out by the state since we do not receive ADA apportionment. So they always warn us and probably Laguna Beach to make sure that your reserves are enough to carry you through any kind of economic downturn. So some of those reserves have to be put aside for economic uncertainty because we will not get a bailout like other districts would get. And so we have to be even more conservative in that respect. But you'll see that in the letter from the county. I'll make sure I include a copy to all the board members, that they always caution us with that.
Do you have Mrs.? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Flure.
I think, just in response to that, too, I think it's incumbent upon us to realize that we used to do a dual adoption. We were approved, we had a dual adoption process. So we were able to have an interim budget approved in June. And then we came in with our final adoption in September, which was a lot easier, a lot clearer, because we knew exactly what was happening. Again, that's how we could be really accurate. And now because of us, the state changing and saying, no more, no such thing, we are doing our best in June to project. And so I think that's really an important point is that I preferred the dual adoption and I wish we still had it. But I do have two questions. One is on the form that you're turning in to the...
I have that right here.
Right? It's on page number, because I'm a little confused, just a little confused on one part. It's on page, oh, where is it? Oh, yes, it's on page number eight. It says 580 million, I mean, thousand, 580,128 dollars on in community redevelopment funds not subject to GAN. I thought they got rid of the, and then in the, it's the same amount as budgeted in 2018, 19, but it's now moved to the restricted side. So I was just curious to know, well, it's a little bit less, but I'm just curious to know because I thought they got rid of redevelopment funds. Are these different redevelopment funds?
These are different redevelopment funds. And it's interesting, they did change it to restricted. They allowed us to put it in unrestricted this time. But they, these are, and I'll come back to you with the detail if I could later on with an email. But they are different than your regular redevelopment. And we currently do get redevelopment money now. It comes directly to us. Because we are a community-funded district, they're considered property taxes.
Okay.
And so a part of the property tax apportionment includes a substantial redevelopment portion. And this is outside of that portion. And actually, it is restricted now because we have to spend it on certain things. And we do that, we do define that here in the report. And I'll, if I could send you an email.
Okay. Because I was just really, so, community redevelopment, okay. And so the other question is sort of a philosophical question. And if you could put up that slide of the one where we have the declining enrollment? So in comparison to the declining enrollment, our revenues grew by five point...
Six percent.
About six percent, okay? So that, in other words, can we look at that and say, we have more because our decline... More money per child. Yeah, that's the question. We actually get, we are able to put more money into classrooms because we have less students. The less students we have, our revenue continues to rise or stay above that. So it's more money to our children.
That's correct. That is per student, that is higher per student allocation. And that is showing up in the classroom and showing up in lower class sizes and professional development, those kinds of things.
And then also, that's, we can also push some of that money over and that's how we're able to fund all the air conditioning, you know, can we...
That's correct.
So we have, we have the surplus money that we get goes to... Okay.
Yeah, and air conditioning is a tremendous, huge project.
Yeah, huge, huge project.
Mrs. Flure, if I, President Snell, also clarify that, you know, this board, as I've now been here a year and a half, and I've understood more of the culture of this district, as Dr. Navarro mentioned, that is certainly the case. When times are good, we can have our revenues increasing and have more money per student. But when the economy changes...
Right.
We are not like other districts where the state is going to come in. So you have set reserves and you have adequate reserves. But this board, as I've gotten to know you all, know this district, has been very, very good about saying, we're not going to build up just for the sake of saving money. We're going to spend the money on our priorities. And so it's not, I don't quibble with the term surplus, but I do think that it's important to think, every single year, you have had objectives that you would like to do that are good for our students and for our community that exceed the amount of money that we have. So you're always, every year, looking at what are the most important priorities? And you have thankfully been able to commit significant amounts of money to your priorities, mental health in the last year in significant ways, to providing air conditioning at the schools at a significant cost. But all of that is through a lot of planning on the district's part. The district has always been great about never overspending. So yes, there might be a little bit where our budget served as a limit and we underspent, but that's always where, we do it every year. So we expect a little bit to be there every year going over. We don't want to dip into our reserves. So, you know, carry over a small amount. If I had $20 in my wallet and I spend 1950, I carry over 50 cents. But I keep spending it every year. I keep planning for that. That's what our district does and we do it very well here.
Well, and I think it's important because the basic aid school districts, because when they came in for this limit, they were doing the reserve limit and it was limited to 3%. And then so, basic aid districts were really going to be in a real pinch because exactly what Dr. Navarro said. If, we're not going to be bailed out by the state. They're not going to come in and help us. And so that's why the law was changed and excluded. And I think we're allowed to keep up to 18, I think it's the max we can keep up is 18%. We don't ever get that because we're spending it. But we do have that, we have to, we have to be prudent with our funds and we do have those priorities.
That's a really good comment, Mrs. Flure. In our reserves, you know, you look at our stabilization, which is about 13.5 million, that wouldn't even cover one payroll.
Right.
For both, you know, certificated and classified.
Exactly.
So, sounds like a lot of money, but it's really not.
That's what maintains our AAA bond rating, right?
There you go. Ms. Metoyer.
One of the things that we do is in our excellent budgeting. When it was talking about a trend of surpluses that Dr. Doughty was referring to, if we, do we typically, like, when we see something, we budgeted, say, $100,000 for this one item year after year after year, do we pay attention that it, this year it was almost $90,000, but the next year it's 80, and then the next year it's 30? What, do we then adjust it? Or do we not? And if we don't, why don't we?
Yes, there's adjustments that happen both at first, second, and, first and second interim and then estimated actuals. And you will see, you'll notice when we come to you in our interim reports, you'll see the actual changes in those budgets. We provide you with those windows. And that's what happens. You'll see, we start out high, and then as we're moving throughout the year, we're making adjustments and it comes down.
But I meant from year after year after year? So like, we bought red bricks and we estimated $100,000. And then the next year, we estimated $100,000, but we only spent 80. And the next year, we estimated 100 again, but we only spent 80. Do we ever say, let's estimate 80?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay.
That's why we, that's why they, when they put the budget together, we're always, we always are absolutely like, oh, well then why aren't you putting up property taxes? Why are we, the local revenue at, you know, property taxes are coming in at 7% and we're still budgeting and for years, we've been kept keeping at the most conservative level so that we're not projecting overspending and all of a sudden going, oh, now what are we going to do?
But we do, we've been taking care of that with air conditioning.
The other thing I know that you know very well, and Mr. Reed talked about often, is one-time monies versus ongoing expenditures.
Nothing that eats.
Nothing that eats.
As Mrs. Flure just said, yes. And you've done a very good job over the years of looking at the differences in what happens in property tax collections and allocating those to very important priorities, but not priorities that, or not to expenditures that would continue on year after year after year so that you could adjust if the property taxes change, collections changed in the future year.
Okay, Mrs. Yelson.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment and then I am going to give my time to Van because he does not have a button and would like to say something. But beforehand, just to add on to this a little bit, I think one of the things I'm really proud of, and I think we all are, is the fact that we've been very prudent with our, with our spending. And we haven't put ourselves in a situation where we've overspent and we're looking to eliminate programs or courses. And it goes back to when we had the recession and we did not, we did not have to have furlough days or we didn't get rid of any teachers. And I think that's what we're looking for because we are a property tax-based district. And I think that's one of the reasons that you mention this all the time, is that we have to be more prudent with our savings. And I personally think we've done a really good job of that. And I will give time to Van.
Thank you. I'm just sort of curious as to if we know why enrollment is trending down?
It's a good question.
It's a statewide trend, actually. All districts in the state, the Department of Finance publishes live birth projections out to 30 and 40 years. And if you were to go and look at those and see where we are now, you'll see that all districts have been projected to and all districts are experiencing this declining enrollment across the state.
And it's significant in some school districts. Saddleback has just said that they're down 1,000 students. I mean, that's a lot of kids that they're down. I mean, they're, they're not community-based either, so they're revolting.
So this is actually just a lower birth rate that's causing the lack of students?
It's a, it's a big demographic issue for the state overall because, of course, birth rates is one thing and birth rates are significantly down. Immigration is another factor. Emigration, people immigrating out of the state is another issue. But the biggest issue is changes in the historic birth rates here in California.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question.
Good question. Okay. So move approval of the 2017-18 unaudited actuals, second.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Flure, seconded by Ms. Metoyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, and it carries. And Dr. Doughty, if, obviously you can get with Mr. Trader if your questions weren't answered. Okay, so now we're on to 18D, first reading and adoption of modifications to board policy.
This is a four-part act. And our first act is Ms. Olson, who will review some personnel, board policies with you. Then will be followed by either Dr. Jocum or Dr. DiAgostino, one of the doctors will cover the next one. And then Dr. Bauermeister will go. And then either Russell or I, or I will review the last one.
Okay, would you like us to review them all and then vote in lump? Or can we review?
I think we should go one at a time.
Okay.
And we are asking for first readings and approval at this time, but we don't have to do it if you don't feel comfortable.
Gotcha.
Okay?
Well, President Snell, members of the board, Superintendent Navarro and executive cabinet and guests, coming forward to you tonight is the board policy regarding professional standards, which we have looked at previously. And the board had asked some questions and for me to come back with some information. So one of the questions that was raised through our previous conversation was, what are some of the mechanisms in place to protect privacy and records? We went from the standards to that conversation. So I did want to get back to you on that. And while there is no absolute way to prevent someone from doing something that they shouldn't do, such as taking district records and using them inappropriately, we do have several board policies that do address confidentiality. There is one regarding unauthorized release of confidential and privileged information, which states strongly that if that is breached, that disciplinary action can take place. But there's also pieces in our district records as well as personnel files. Those two board policies, one's a board policy, one's an administrative reg, also reflect the importance of confidentiality that all of us hold as school employees. The other piece that we talked a little bit about was the use of technology. So I'm going to move to that part of the board policy if that's all right with the board. Where we left off was on page, I'll call it page C. So you'll notice in this, we added in the suggestions where we have that employees shall be notified that computer files and electronic communications, including but not limited to email, voicemail and text. So that's the addition. And then we had a conversation about that they are not private. And we wanted to expand on the CSVA recommendation. And so during our, during the conversation presentation last time, we really only talked about public records requests. But as I started to do the research on another board policy that we hope to bring forward to you soon, which is employee use of technology, it goes above and beyond. It expands beyond public records requests. So we thought that this phrase would capture it much better and state that it may be subject to disclosure pursuant to a subpoena or other lawful request. So that is a broader scope. As employees that we do not have, we don't have reasonable expectation of privacy in terms of the electronic use of, with district business. And so we were hoping that that would capture what the concern was, that people would be notified of that. And then, again, I want to share with you, I will be bringing forward in the near future the board policy 4040, the employee use of technology, which will elaborate on it even further and in more depth. which will elaborate on it even further and in more depth.
Mrs. Florrie. I just have a question, and it's, and it's related, but it's not related. We currently have a policy based on the length of time that we should be keeping, you know, keeping records.
Paper records.
Well, no, our records on.
Retention.
Retention, we have a retention policy on emails, we have a retention policy. Do we communicate that with our, our staff as well, that they should have their own personal? Or, or do we let them know that our policy is this in terms of district business? The retention policy is this? And the expectation is, is that teachers also and staff members also maintain that retention policy?
We actually began to look at the retention policy of electronic, but I don't think we, I don't believe that we firmed up the final decision on that.
Okay, so we, we're still, that's, and that's one that you're gonna be bringing to us, especially about texts and things like that, about not keeping, not keeping.
Actually, the costly one is emails.
Right.
You know, because we have to pay for that storage, and it's thousands of dollars. So we really need to address the stor-, you know, people don't empty out their, their inboxes. They don't trash out, they don't throw, they don't empty their trash. So you can have twenty, thirty, forty thousand emails stored, and we have to pay for that storage. So it's really becoming.
I better do that, I better.
It's really becoming a, a financial issue for us. So we're looking at that as to how far back can we go and what can we afford to do? But we can't afford to keep seven, eight years' worth of emails anymore because we have to pay for cloud storage of that.
Well, and, and the, the law firms like Fagan, Full Frost, and Friedman, they're all making a recommendation that it's not even kept for, you know, it's like six months in some cases. Certain, certain emails shouldn't be kept at all.
Well, we do have, for example, Dr. Jocum needs to keep her emails about three years because they may be used in legal proceedings for special ed. So there are some exceptions to that. But in general, yes, we should be able, we should actually be able to come back in September and have a clean slate, you know, as employees, because we don't really need to keep our stuff.
Okay, but if you put something in the trash, don't you, I assume that it's.
We can't just empty it automatically.
Can't empty the trash.
Awesome, awesome is, awesome Babavich, our director of IT, has been involved in all this, so.
So that we can address that, that issue, that's my only question about that.
Okay. And this is only addressing district?
Yes.
How long do you keep a district email? We can.
Not personal, yeah.
It's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress, right, because I don't keep mine.
So as we look at the employee use of technology, we can also then look at the records component.
Ms. Metoyer.
One of our policies you worked with, with the union, was this one? Yes, okay, that's what I was going to.
And they were very supportive.
Thank you, I was going to thank both of our, our representatives that are here for working with us because this affects their, their body and.
Not only were, were they're very supportive in terms of this board policy, but also the, the document that was created and that we are using with employees for protecting their professional reputation, which is more of guidelines versus the policy. So it's been very helpful, very healthy conversation.
Thank you to both groups and the supervisory group.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
So the motion is first reading.
I waived to move the, the first reading to make it a, a final reading, reading and adopt?
Waived the second.
Waived the second reading for, I guess, you want the numbers? Board policy forty-one nineteen dot twenty-one, forty-two nineteen dot twenty-one, and forty-three nineteen dot twenty-one.
Okay, second is.
I did.
Okay, okay, so it's moved by Ms. Florrie and seconded by Ms. Yelsey, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Now we're moving on to.
Dr. DiAgostino.
Dr. DiAgostino.
Good evening, President Snell, Vice President Metoyer, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, thank you. You may remember that I looked quite foolish up here two weeks ago because I had a different board policy than what was up there. And so we just wanted to bring this back to you. So my apologies for that last board meeting. So I do have the right, so now the screen has gone off. There's some kind of conspiracy against me getting this approved tonight. Actually, so I do have the right document in front of me and just wanted to go over it briefly on chronic absence and truancy. And so we started with, as you know, a more holistic approach to chronic absence and truancy has been the, the mission of Student Services since I became the Director of Student Services. And so we've, we've got more language in there talking about the holistic approach to dealing with truancy and chronic absences. And then in the third paragraph in this area right here, this is language that is consistent with CSBA language that was recommended to us and a discussion of the local control and accountability plan and how that, how attendance plays into that. We then updated the codes that are related to this and then cleaned up language at the bottom here on this next paragraph. Cleaned up some language and included language about truancy prevention strategies. As you know, we've been moving towards developing quite a few truancy prevention strategies that are, I believe, outside the box and really developing good results for us, not the least of which is our stay-in-school campaign that we're rolling out this year. So I think this language is, is kind of consistent with that. And then if you, we go down to the next area, more comprehensive language reflecting partnerships, government agencies, mental health, et cetera. As you know, our Health Division falls into Student Services, so providing healthcare providers as partners with us in, in dealing with truancy and, and chronic absenteeism. And then at the end down here, we've added language, again, consistent with CSBA guidelines, that we obviously do not out of, out of school suspend students for missing school. That would be kind of counterintuitive.
Reward more than.
So we wanted to put that language in there. And we do use other means of correction and alternative discipline strategies to reinforce positive attendance in our schools. And that would be the, that would be the, the, I'm sorry, then moving on. Discussion of improving attendance rates. As you know, we have a new discipline dashboard, and so we've reflected language in this next paragraph about gathering progress and improving student attendance. And we do that through our attendance dashboards, and we're gonna come back to you with a report on that. And then we, and then some clarification of our SARB process that it is, it is what defines the centerpiece of our truancy prevention. And again, that holistic approach that's mentioned earlier in the board policy on chronic absence and truancy is reflected in our SARB policy. And as you can see at the bottom there, we added additional language, once again, to discuss the various agencies and support that we have from law enforcement as well as the District Attorney's Office in partnering with reducing chronic absenteeism. And then finally, we added, once again, additional codes consistent with CSBA recommendations at the end of this board policy to update the, the overall policy itself, so.
Ms. Metoyer.
I did find a, an awkward sentence in the very first paragraph on page A. Fourth line down, it starts with "the board." I'm letting Mrs. Snyder get it. Are you there? Okay, it says, "The board believes these issues may," and it stops. So I think.
Oh, yeah, that's out.
Yes, but that's not a sentence, and it doesn't do anything. And I thought, I think it was to say, I, "The board believes that these issues may put students at risk." And I think "at risk" is where we should stop it, not of dropping out of school because it could put students at risk of a lot of things, and it gives us more, a broader scope to be able to work with the kids. So I would put back in, "put students at risk," and end the sentence there.
But don't you think the first sentence covers that?
Yeah, but the, that, what she just said is not a sentence.
Not a sentence.
No, I understand. I, I thought, I remembered when we went over this.
That whole sentence should be gone?
That the whole sentence should be gone. That "The Board of Education believes that excessive student absenteeism and tardiness, whether blah blah, may be early warning signs of poor academic achievement and may be an indicator of dysfunctional behaviors brought on by social emotional issues."
And then you don't, then we don't need the sentence at all.
Yeah, we don't need it, we could just strike, strike it.
Yeah, if I, if I had to guess the intent of the founders of this policy, I feel like a constitutional scholar right now. I would guess that the intent was to strike out that whole sentence, not to.
And I think I remember in our meeting, our small meeting, editing meeting, that we struck that.
I think we, I think we felt that was unnecessary, yeah.
Thank you.
So we'll strike it, and you can approve it as amended?
Well, I'd still, I'd get some more light.
I'm done.
Mrs. Florrie.
Yeah, going, going up to that same paragraph, I have a real problem with the word dysfunctional because you're, 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 you're putting it out, you're, you're giving it a medical definition because dysfunction is a medical definition. So I would prefer unhealthy behaviors brought on by, and I think there's more than that. And I think you should invite, either add the word environmental because it could be family issues. You know, so the word, if you put environmental.
Or.
Hopefully that, that covers.
Right.
Family issues, issues of safety, parental issues, I don't care. But it's, so that's why I think that you should, you know.
Or if I may, Mrs. Florrie, you could even just take the whole word out and just say an indicator of behaviors that brought on by social emotional issues.
Yeah, but can you, yeah, but can you add the word environmental issues?
Sure.
Social, environmental.
Social, emotional, yeah, that's, because I think that there's more, there's other.
So, am I hearing you correctly? Would you like to take the word dysfunctional out and put in brought on by social, emotional, environmental issues?
That works, that works. And then my.
I don't know, I think that, I think there needs to be an adjective there.
Unhealthy behaviors.
Unhealthy, and I would use the word unhealthy.
Indicator of behaviors.
No, yeah.
What do you think?
May I suggest negative instead of unhealthy?
Negative.
Which has a slightly broader scope.
Hmm, that's a good one.
Negative, that's good. What, what do you think, Dr. Jocum? I'm just interested in your opinion.
Well, I, I think it does need an adjective to describe what kind of behaviors we're talking about. So I think we can wordsmith it, you know, I mean, I, I agree maybe dysfunctional is a little too, too much of a medical term. So, yeah, it's either unhealthy or negative, but I.
Do you want, do you want, okay, are you prepared to, do you want to take it back, or do?
I would prefer unhealthy versus negative because that's, negative is in the, in the eyes of the holder. Well, what do you mean negative? You know, I'm not going to school because, it's not necessarily that it's a negative behavior, it's just that.
I recommend we stay with negative, I mean, with unhealthy as well. Unhealthy. Not that negative is the wrong word, it's just not in the context of this.
It is behaviors we don't want to see, which is negative, but it gives it a little more compassion.
But how is just unhealthy different than dysfunctional? Isn't that still medical?
It's less medical.
Less medical than dysfunctional.
And then would you like environmental added after social and emotional?
Yes, please.
So we'll go social, comma, emotional, comma, and environmental.
And then.
Oh, are you done? You have more?
I have one more.
Okay.
And this is just page number C, and it's just a question whether we can do this or not. Is because we talk about habitual truance, truancy, we talk about chronic truancy. We talk about these words, but they're not defined. You know, we know what they are because a lot of us deal with SARB. And so we know that a, you know, habitual is defined as this. We know that a chronic is defined by this. We know that a truancy is not the same as a cut. So is there a way either to put a slip of, a group of definitions as an appendix and say, these are what it is, and I think we should be doing that with all of our policies, of defining what, what, what is a habitual truant?
Or is it in the ARs?
No, actually, it's not. The, the chronic truancy, habitual truancy, these, these, these terms have current definitions.
Yes, exactly.
Those definitions have changed over time. A chronic truant ten years ago is not a chronic truant today. We have a much more holistic view of absences, absenteeism. There is a much more holistic approach, too. So I would only caution you that if we, if we get, if we put in board policy and administrative regulations definitions currently, we may have to come back and change them again at some point.
Well, it's just that, you know, if you have a parent who's reading this and we are communicating with a parent that says, your child has, is, you know, we are labeling your child a habitual truant, that may be subject.
Yes.
I mean, do we put that in the letter?
Yes, ma'am.
Should it be in the policy?
So what we do do when we, when we issue the chronic absence letters and the truancy letters that are automated and go out at various benchmarks in our truancy prevention plan, we do give education code, we give board policy reference, and we define, we define terms. And we define a chronic absence as more than three full days, as the state does. We define habitual truancy as ten percent or more. And so all of that is indicated in our, in our truancy letters.
Okay.
And it's also gone over with our administrators, our site administrators, so they're aware. I want to make sure that.
We, absolutely.
Electronically triggered, I know, but.
Right.
Sometimes, especially at the elementary level, it has a different level of.
And there is a truancy prevention and intervention manual that Student Services gives out to all the administrators every year.
Yeah, see, because I'm, I'm just reading what the policy says in here. And it says, "In accordance with law and administrative regulations, habitual truance may be referred to the SARB."
Right.
Okay, so as defined currently, as defined in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, if there's an appendage that says it can be up to, I mean, I don't know. I don't necessarily want it in the policy, but I think it should be somewhere.
We could probably work the ARs. We'd probably work the accompanying ARs and just say.
Because they can be changed.
Because they can be changed and say, habitual truant is defined as this, chronic truant is defined as this. And in that way, we can, we can keep it consistent with the law whenever the law is changing.
Exactly.
So we'll take that to the ARs.
Mrs. Black.
Okay, so you guys have all hashed that out. So when the, when the DA, when we refer, and I know that's not our objective, you know, to do that, but we would have to, I would think, delineate what those, what that means when we refer a student. We'd have to tell the DA exactly how many absences they have had. You know, and that we've worked with them on this amount of time. So does the DA's office have a threshold, you know, that holds us accountable before we're? So is it ten percent, or is it more than three to five days? I mean, what?
Yeah, it's not, not only is it a, a number of absences, Mrs. Black, but it's also a process. So we have to follow an SST, we have to follow a, a, a SARB hearing at the school site before there's a SARB hearing at the district level. They must attend a DA parent meeting, and as Dr. Navarro mentioned, we, we could specify all that in the ARs.
On the individual, you know, and, and, you know, maybe, because I'm, I'm curious that the ed code wouldn't have it. So although I haven't read it lately to see, but I know it does talk about behavior.
The process from going from a student who's absent to a student who is now in court in front of a judge and being prosecuted by the County District Attorney's Office is a process that's evolved in, in both formal and informal ways. And, and so.
I'm very familiar, you know, with it from reading that, but, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we could, you know, be really strict in it. I mean, to give it, for example, if you are something.
No, it's, it's very clear. We have to, we have, they have to, they have to have, and they have, not only do we have to let them know what the absences are, but the kicker is, is what has this district done?
Correct.
To help that student? And before, we were sending kids up and nothing was happening. They were getting kicked back. So now it's, it's a very strict process.
Right.
It says, we had how many attempts, phone calls, and the school has to document every single.
There's an administrator statement that is attached to the referral to the District Attorney.
And that's what I'm saying, usually in the letter of the law, they tell you what the infractions are and how you have, you know, you know, gone against the different, or, you know, or how you've misused it. So I just, I, I do think this is interesting, you know, that we don't have to put.
So, Mr. Tran, do you have something you wanted to say? No?
Yes. I was wondering if we could please just really quickly return to this whole unhealthy thing? Because considering what I've seen and what I've, what I've experienced at Back Bay, I think this word is very important. And health, I think you would agree, is a medically defined state. And if we're trying to get away from this medical definition, unhealthy may be equally useful. unhealthy may be equally useless as dysfunctional. Perhaps a wording of behaviors that negatively impact a student's education, which is more specific.
I like that. I don't like unheal, I, I'm not sold on unhealthy either. So that's an interesting.
Negatively.
So how is it, behavior, an indicator of behaviors?
I don't really have a problem with dysfunction.
That, well, I didn't either. Behaviors that affect.
That negatively impact a student's education.
But it already says that in the first thing, maybe an early one, per academic achievement.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
It says, whether excused or unexcused, absences may be early, or more signs of poor academic achievement.
Maybe an indicator of.
Can we bring that up, please, on the screen?
Yeah, it's C.
We need a word.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went too far up.
Pej.
I thought it was C, no?
Did we want to cover professional standards again?
No.
You're right there. You're there.
There you go.
You're there, you're there.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, so let's, I, I've got the thesaurus up here. Okay, so let's do.
I don't have any trouble with dysfunctional.
You could say undesirable.
That's what I was thinking. Undesirable? That's good.
Do you like that?
I like undesirable, yeah.
Undesirable?
That works.
I'm a walking thesaurus.
You are.
Thank you.
So we're, so if I'm hearing you correctly, is there a consensus around undesirable behaviors that are brought on by social, emotional, and environmental issues?
Yes.
Well, she likes it. Does y'all like it?
Everybody else? Everybody else okay with undesirable?
I'm okay.
Second the motion.
So that was one change, and then the other change was the sentence that was after that.
Right, to get rid of that.
Were there any more changes? Is that it?
May I move?
Sure, you can move.
And then we will look at our ARs internally.
If you know all the changes.
Okay.
I, I do, okay. Just, just, okay. I move that we approve.
As amended.
I'm gonna, approve Board Policy 5113.1 as amended and waive the second reading.
God, you're good, you're good. You're good.
Okay.
We'll keep you.
So, you're, and so.
Sherry, you got it?
Sherry, you're clear, okay. So it is moved by Ms. Matoye and seconded by Ms. Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
So what about B and C?
Thank you, Mr. Tran, right there. Okay. Chronic absences and truancy. Moving on. Mrs. Snell, that was all part of it? You said A through C?
Oh, no, I was, I just said the numbers. Board Policy 5113.1.
And then you have A, B, and C.
No, no, those are just page numbers of it.
That doesn't matter, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we're on to advertising.
1325.
And promotion, 1325, okay.
President Snell, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and distinguished guests. We have community relations, advertising, and promotion. And I just wanted to read the first sentence to you just so we're clear on what we're doing here. This policy is to ensure effective and consistent standards for advertising and promotions by non-school groups in school-related publications and on school facilities and grounds.
Can we underline the words non-school groups? Can that be underlined in the policy?
The towel size of it, whatever.
Sherry can.
Put it in bold, that'd be even better.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I think that's the key phrase in there.
Yeah, that's the key phrase. It's non-school.
That's why I wanted to read it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the next part down that I wanted to go over is, under limited public forums, that second part, the superintendent or designee may approve the following if age-appropriate and consistent with the criteria established in this policy. And then it lists the criteria down below. The one I wanted to pay particular attention to is number three where it says, paid and/or promotional advertisements on school property, including but not limited to advertisements on school fencing, athletic field, gyms, and in school-sponsored publications, yearbooks, and announcements, and for other communications. So the paid ones will generally be the ones in the stadiums, in the gyms, on the baseball and softball fields. The promotional ones will generally be the ones on the outside fences.
For example, we would have to go for, right now it's recruiting time for Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. They're, they're recruiting, it's the back to school, and they want to put banners. So they would be approved because the superintendent, we would, outside groups, because they're not necessarily a non-school, they're school-related, but they're non-school, they would be, we would go to the, those, those groups would go to the school and/or designate to get a request. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's how it works?
Yep.
Perfect.
If you go to page B then, posting and publication of any non-school promotional materials or advertisements, the superintendent or designee shall review the materials and advertisements based on the criteria below. And it talks about some things down there. The AR is much more specific on the, on the basic criteria that, and it'll have also a sticker that goes on the, the banner that, that will have a disclaimer on it, which it goes to the next paragraph down where it says, "The superintendent or designee shall require a disclaimer of any school group's promotional materials." So that group will come in, they'll get it approved by the principal, they'll have a sticker on it that will say the date that it's supposed to be taken down in 30 days, and on that sticker we'll have the disclaimer on there that the district doesn't support this, you know, the material, the wording that we need on there.
Could I request that for the benefit of the public, we show the part being discussed on the screen?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think it's right there.
It's gonna keep you in line.
I need all the help I can get. And the next part down, it says, criteria for approval, those are all the thou shalt nots. Luden lascivious, inciting students.
Individuals.
Individuals.
Yeah.
Yeah, inciting individuals to commit unlawful acts, political interests in candidates, prayer, controversial issues.
Mm-hmm.
Denigrating people, promoting the sale of materials illegal.
I just want to, lest someone think that we're trying to stop any groups that may want to meet on campus. That's not what we're doing. We're saying promotion of that. So I, I, it always comes up, religion often comes up, and it's like, we're not trying to say you can't have your group that meets, but that group can't say you must be this group, or this group is better than that group. That's not where we're going. So we're not saying, no, we can't have it. They just can't advertise like.
Yeah, this came from CSBA.
Yes.
Yeah.
Since you're on B, we've taken out, on a couple places, we've taken out principal, and we've just put superintendent or designee. So therefore, the, the comma should come out.
Oh, okay.
There's a couple of places.
Yeah, there's a couple.
The first paragraph, the third paragraph, the, under criteria for improvement, that paragraph.
The word principal, and, and it's appropriate comma.
Well, there's a, there's a comma after superintendent also.
Oh, um.
See, it says the superintendent or designee should not, there should not be any.
No, there's no comma.
There should be no commas, right.
Right, you're saying there shouldn't be.
Yeah, but under criteria for approval, I don't know, the, the principal is, did we take the principal out of that one?
We took the principal out, yes.
I think we took him out of everything.
I don't remember that one.
They are the designee.
Sometimes they're implied the design, they're implied.
Okay, so that's three places. And then the third place, taking out the principal. Okay.
That sounds really.
Under criteria for approval.
Take out the principal.
Sheer is not at all.
Okay, good. Okay, and I guess we're on to.
C.
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 Additional criteria pertaining to the content of advertisements and/or promotions on school property and school publications and yearbooks may be added as deemed appropriate by the superintendent or designee. So just gives them the ability to.
He's on D, we're on C.
We're on C.
Oh, you're on C?
We can go overseas.
Which is changing the word children to students.
Right, we're going back to C.
And/or inconsistent.
Let's go back to C.
There we go.
Okay.
Propot, okay.
Okay.
And then we got rid of, because it was duplicated.
Mm-hmm.
I think there was, I thought there was another one that was duplicated. Um, the, there's another one that's duplicated that's not crossed off. The blue number eight that says distribute unsolicited merchandise for which blah, 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 that one should be eliminated because it appears as red number 11.
Yep. I think he renumbered them.
Well, I'm just saying, though, that line.
It's a duplicate. There were two duplicates on that page.
No, I get that. I'm just saying, I don't know whether eight should be taken out or, or 11.
Well, I suggested that we take out the first one because we took out the other first one, so just leave it down where the red is.
Okay.
Do you see it, Sherry?
So we're removing the blue eight and we're leaving the red 11.
Well, you have to move.
The blue eight, that's, that's, the blue eight that's black.
Right.
Yeah, that one has to go out.
It would be just easier just to do number 11, but then you'd have to read it number all.
Just to take out, yeah.
Yeah, I would just do the other opposite, but Sherry will figure it out. Whichever's easier, whichever's easier for you. She'd have to cut and paste.
Are you ready for D?
Are you ready for D? Any questions?
Anything else on C?
Okay. Looks like we're ready for D.
And that just gives the superintendent or designee the ability to add other things as they deem appropriate.
I just want to make sure under this one, because this is the one that, I just want to make sure that we're consistent, that, that an individual, a non-school group, an individual can't go from school shop to school shop, and this principal says, oh, yeah, I can put that in. And, and that's why I wanted to take out, because I want to make sure that it's consistent, so that we're not, we don't have groups that are school shopping and say, well, I want to put it in, I want to put them in all. Well, I'm not allowed in that one, but I can go into this one. So that's what, that's my big issue on this. So as long as you can assure us that it's the superintendent or the designee, the designee is going to be reviewing this, so.
We'll, we'll make sure that they don't add things without talking to the superintendent.
Or, or designate, that's right.
Yeah, getting it cleared.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, so move approval of Board Policy 1325 as amended and waive second reading.
Second. Okay, moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, now we're on to charter schools.
Oh, boy, this is.
Okay. Do you want him to speak first, or, does it matter?
Well, let's go through it, and then he'll be able to make other comments.
Okay.
Was that okay for it? Okay. Alrighty, charter schools. So, little side story, last summer, as you know, that we had a petition for a summer program from a charter school. And so, Mr. Lee Sung looked at our charter policy and realized it was a little bit out of date, so we submitted it for some updating. And we got a, now what we bring to you is up to date with all the laws that are current regarding charter schools. So let's go over page A first. Okay, and again, we're updating all of our policies to read Board of Education, not Governing Board, when authorized by the District Board of Education, and then these schools, okay? So this is consistent with the law. So you'll see that we've added two chap, two, two paragraphs here and eliminated the, the old language that was in the, there in the past. And I believe that we haven't really updated these since about 2004.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's page A. Any questions on page A? Okay, let's go to page B, please. Okay, again, approval and denial of petition. This, again, includes all of the current updated regulations on approval or denials of petitions, and puts us in line with current state law. So if you could just take a look here, see if you have any questions.
Is it, this is just a question of semantics. Is it cha, it, is it, is it the, the demand of shall?
Where?
Or will?
The board shall.
The board, it says the board shall versus the board may.
The board shall approve a submitted charter or petition if it is satisfied. So you have to be satisfied. There's an operative word there. It just doesn't say you will approve no matter what. So you have to be satisfied that in doing so, it's consistent with sound educational practice. I think may is a better word. And, so you have a, it's conditional. It's not, it's not, it's not.
Okay, so the next question is, can, and I don't know that, I don't know, but so do, can we put restrictions on the, the amount of votes, for example? If what's, is it, if it's a three-two, and it's a shall, does that mean it's approved? Or can we put it that it has to be a supermajority of the, of the, of the board? Because right now, I mean, that would indicate on a, on a board that there's a split on it, and it hasn't, the majority, you know, three of them haven't, you know, three members haven't been satisfied, and four have. Does that mean because of the word shall, or can we put a, can we vote, can we put in there a condition that it has to be a supermajority? I'm, I, I don't have anything, I just want to make sure, can we, can we do that?
You, you probably cannot do that.
Okay.
And it's also, there's timelines in here, so you have to meet these timelines.
Okay.
So there are timelines that if you don't meet them, then it's probably going to go forward for approval.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Then the second sentence goes, talks about denying the petition as well. So you're not, you're not handcuffed here.
Right, right.
Then some cleanup language on the second paragraph and on the third paragraph, and then new paragraphs just at, right under the site for accountability or code 0500. And again, it explicitly delineates exactly what the procedures are, not just for the board, but for the petitioners. Any questions on page B?
Well, I'm going to go back again. On all of this, it says in compliance with the law. The law does not have, is silent on the, the concept of, of conflict of interest and disclosure. And, so that's because it's, it's silent on that. Can we put in conflict of interest, that they have to, they have to, they have to have the disclosure that we, we all have to do, the FPPC?
There, I have seen memorandums of understanding between districts and petitioners that outline certain specifics such as that.
Okay.
So, yeah, that is something you can entertain and, and propose and enter into an MOU that they will follow. But again, the laws have changed. They are now subject, I think, to open meeting laws.
Mm-hmm.
And recently, non-proph, or for-profits are no longer authorized to operate.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, that was nice.
Yeah. Okay.
Doesn't mean to say that the for-profit, the not-for-profits aren't for-profits.
All right, any other questions on page B?
Okay.
Okay, page C, again, elimination of our old language and entered all new language here.
Can you pull that down?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going off paper. I should be going off of here, sorry. Okay, so we just went over page B.
See, they didn't change it.
And now we're on page C.
I see what.
Okay.
Recognized to oversee that.
Right.
To oversee any charter.
All right, this really focuses on oversight, okay? Especially if there is a charter operation company running, running a charter, okay? And you have a right to put somebody on their board if that is so. So if Green Dot Schools wanted to run a charter in our district, you would have a right to put somebody on that board that sits over that charter, okay? That's what this.
It's a read write, it's not. It's a read write, it's not-
It's awkward.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's awkward, it's wrong question. Okay, we have a question, this is another grammatical.
A readability.
A readability. The first sentence says, "The Board of Education recognizes its ongoing responsibility to oversee that any charter." Is it any charter that the board has authorized is successfully? Or is that word that?
Yeah, there's a that missing.
That any charter.
Is it oversee, is it, is it to oversee that any charter? Is that the correct verbiage or should be to oversee any charter that the board has authorized is successfully?
What about-
Or charter school, yeah.
But can we, so basically it was, can we move the that from in front of the word any to in front of the word the board?
Yes, or you can change it to see, to oversee that any charter authorized by the board is successfully fulfilling.
That works, that works too. Either way, I don't care.
So I just move authorized in front and then I put by, by the board is successfully fulfilling the terms of its charter. So we have an, if you ever choose to authorize a petition, you have an obligation to oversee it.
Right.
Okay. Sherry, did you get that?
So it's going to read that any charter school authorized by the board has, is successfully fulfilling the terms of its charter.
That's maybe one that has to come back.
Thank you.
Is it on the board, not in the board? Where is it?
Placed in the board? No, on the board.
Wait a minute. Hold on, hold on. Any sense representative or registered district board or designee should be removed or replaced? On.
On.
On the board. Last sentence.
Are you talking about where we, where we had this conversation about on and at and in?
No, second paragraph.
No, the, the line below it.
Okay.
Where the, where the, where the blue says charter schools corporate, it says shall be removed or replaced on the board, not in the board.
Or at.
No. Replaced on the board.
It should be at the board or designated.
No, it should be replaced on the board.
Actually, that would be at the board's discretion.
Yes.
No, that's correct.
Oh, no, no, you're right.
No, no, you're, it's, no, no.
Yes.
It says, wait a minute, it says that right up there at the top. It says corporate board in, it says corporate board at the board's discretion or designated, and shall be removed or replaced in the board or designated?
No, no.
So-
Again, it's at the board or designated discretion. So it should be, the board's, shall be removed or replaced at the board or designated, it's an at.
It's an at.
Yes.
But it's not, it's not an in.
Perhaps to remove ambiguity, you might want to say removed or placed at the discretion of the board or designee.
Yes. Yeah, that would be clear.
Well, they have discretion at the end, it's all discretion. It's absolutely.
We got a lot of this language from legal.
Yeah, the legal.
Legal doesn't always make the-
This is legal, they don't make it easy.
It's those lawyers, yeah.
Did you guys have meetings?
Yes. On this one, but this came from-
This came from legal.
The legal, so this is actually the first time that we're actually seeing, seeing it coming back the second, to, to, after we had some, we had some questions.
Reiterations, looking at CSBA, looking at our old one and then adding some legal advice as well.
And you, every, it's like peeling an onion. Every time you remove the rocks, the pebbles show up.
This will probably be a proven first reading. I hate to tell you that, but.
Okay.
We might want to do a second reading on this one.
I think so.
Okay. Material revisions to charter.
Basically, they can't.
Anything there? Again, this is just protecting you in case they want to make a substantial change to their charter.
Or move.
And they need to have that approved. They can't just do whatever they want.
They have to tell us first.
And also if they, if they move locations, they have to let us know.
All of that is material.
Yep.
Yeah.
You put that in.
So charter school removal, renewal, it outlines the process for renewal and revocations on the next two parts, so we'll go from C through D. See if you have any questions about there?
That's all new.
I know, I, I just, I feel like I-
I, I want a second reading.
No, I want a second reading on this one, yeah.
Yeah. It's a blurb.
Yeah.
The later we get, the harder the things are and it's like, ooh, this should have been done at the beginning of the meeting.
This is, this is, well, this is a hard one because it's, it's-
It's too, so legal.
And it's so difficult because they, they make it difficult, but it's so impactful for, and, and you can't do, you can't use financial as a reason, but it, it is a significant hit to us.
I do want to caution you to look at this carefully because the, enacting it means it gets uploaded and people can look at it for reference. Otherwise, we are bound by our old policies.
So can we postpone this to the next meeting?
So you prefer to have it done quickly?
There's a reason.
So, so I guess we could do it as, and provide you with the authority to amend as, as, okay.
Directly.
I can do that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move, okay.
Could you do that?
I'll, I'll move Board Policy 0420.4. Waive the second reading, but grant the superintendent and designee to make grammatical-
Readability changes.
Changes.
We will.
Is that okay?
Yes.
That works?
Adjustments. Okay. So we have a second? Okay. Dana? Okay, I'm going to ask Dr. Doughty to speak before we vote on this.
So what I was going to be asking was for, for the board to be able to delay, but if there's some other factors at play that need to be taken into account, I understand that. But what I'm approaching the board is because with the AFT and CFT, there are strong opinions about charter schools.
Yes.
And I know that all, many of you have, have strong opinions as well. There, there are concerns that we have specific to fiscal stability, especially related to employees and the pension systems, which we heard about earlier tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And also wanting to make sure that charter schools have an appropriate oversight and public display of their finances as Newport Mesa does. And so those are some things that honestly, I'm not sure what's appropriate or not appropriate within a board policy or an A and R. I honestly don't know.
Yeah.
And so what I'm asking for is there is, is perhaps if there's a subset of the board or the administration and us, and I'm, I'm certain that CSA would probably want to participate in this as well, but I can't speak for them, and to kind of revise if, if those types of ideas, if they should exist in, in the policy or not. And then secondly, I do think it is important that the local school board is the main board that's involved with charter schools because as we all know, there are more applications coming that are bypassing the local school district and going directly to the county. There were some changes of philosophy of some of those board members in the June election. And so if we can engage with the charters here locally and, and help them have things that would be acceptable that, to all of us who work in education, I think that's the better avenue to take. So rather than kind of saying no, 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 and then they bypass and get something approved elsewhere, I think it would be better to engage if possible and try to find parameters that were more acceptable. So ideas such as an MOU that Dr. Navarro mentioned to, mentioned are certainly great ideas. And so I, I think I just need some better understanding of what is appropriate and not.
Well-
So I, I'd like to respond to that.
Yeah, because I think you've got it, we've got it in here, one, the one fiscal accountability is in here.
What we needed to do was update it to current law because our old policy has, is missing a lot of protections and procedures and timelines. There are rules you can put in, in board policy and there are rules you cannot put in board policy. And our attorney, that's why we had attorney, experts in charter school law review this. Questions like those were asked, can you do this, can you do that? No, you can't do that. But what you do have an obligation to do as a, as a local educational agency is to review their petition and make sure it meets the standards that are in law and the standards that we expect a school to have. So things like fiscal transparency and accountability like we do, access to their files if something happens, those are the types of things you can hammer out, but it's not something you can put in your policy to say you can't do this. That, they were very clear about what, what, how, what our limits were as far as the policy could read. You can't try to put things in that automatically will deny petitions if they don't have it in. That's hence the, why you work through an agreement, side agreement on those types of things, or you work through the petition process. Mr. Lee Sung, anything else that I'm missing? Yeah, so we did, we did ask all those questions and this pretty much now puts us current with the current law and protects us better than what we have currently on our website.
I, I think also, I, I think we, it needs to be broad enough and allow some flexibility and in the, in the policy itself, but we tighten, tighten it up in the ARs as it, as it discussed. I mean, it talks about, "The board shall approve a submitted charter if it has satisfied that doing so is consistent with sound educational practice. The board may approve one or more memorandum of understanding to clarify financial and operational agreements. The board shall ensure any charter by, by the board contains adequate processes to, to measure for holding the school accountability, fulfilling the terms of the charter. These include but are not limited to fiscal accountability systems, multiple measures of evaluating the educational programs and regular reports." I think that that is, I mean, based on the advice of counsel, it has to be broad enough because otherwise they can, they can challenge the entire policy. And they would be, and then they would go, and then they could in fact bypass and go to counsel.
So in the, in the last year or two years, the ones that have been rejected by the county board after being rejected by a school district were based on the material petition itself and whether it met the standards that were expected by a, a local educational agency. So the program has to be an effective program. It just can't be any program you want or whatever you want. And so those are petitions that even the county has supported school districts on when they, when their programs are not sufficiently well-designed. And so this kind of puts us in that, in that wheelhouse where we can look at their petition from programmatic standpoint, also fiscal accountability and so on. Yeah.
I also, I think it's prudent to get the latest charter language uploaded and, and approved. And then we can, if there's tweaks, we can look at it later and make more tweaks. I, Dr. Doughty, were you able to read the, the policy? Okay, good. There, there will be other opportunities to, to tweak this some more. Okay, so I have a motion by-
But we hear you and share your same concerns.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a motion by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Mrs. Black, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that policy goes.
That's it.
Okay, now, Board Member reports. And I'm going to start with Ms. Metoyer.
Thank you.
I should start in the middle sometimes, I always start down there.
Well, I'm going to eliminate a lot of what everyone's going to say.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry. We had a wonderful all-staff luncheon and we, the board was able to experience a facilities tour that allowed us to see all the new sites that had the air conditioning, the new entries, the new modifications, Enson's new locker room. It was, I really appreciated setting that up because we can get a nice report from the facilities that says, here's what we did, but when you get to go out and walk into the school and see it, it really makes a big difference. I appreciated that. I enjoyed that.
Well, kudos to you for suggesting it.
Oh, well. Thank you. Yay.
Can you do this?
Okay. But it was a good idea and it, and it was fun.
It was fun.
And we ended up, and we each got our own little safety vest, so yay. Very fashionable. The transportation kickoff is wonderful. I can't thank transportation enough. I'm really excited to have Shelley on board, but our transportation department without a head kicked off our school year and got kids to schools the first week of school because it was, it's such a well-oiled machine, no pun intended, because there's what, 180 well-oiled machines? And, and it's nice to be able to thank them and appreciate them. And today, last Friday, I went to Polerino and saw their kickoff of their PBIS and how they, which is the Positive Behavior Intervention System, and I may be wrong. And basically it was a hands-on, walk around, sit in the area, this is how the behavior, this is what we expect, it's teaching children systems. This is what, this is how you behave, let me show you how it is. And the sixth graders were the demonstrators at every single station. So here's the first graders looking up at the sixth graders going, this is how I become a Polerino Panther and this is how I behave. And it was really enjoyable and, and the kids, and they made it fun. And then today I went over to Victoria because I know the librarian there and they had a generous donation from the Ardris-
Ardris.
Ardris, thank you, family. And they had a beautiful, brand-new library that's almost finished because there's a pile of books in the corner. And MNO was there closing off, turning a door into a wall so that they can expand it anymore legally, gone through by DSA to make sure it was an okay door to close. Yes. And it's, it's so much, so beautiful. And I know that we've had two other libraries that were renovated this summer and it was just, it's, the kids were excited about being in the library and I don't know how long the cushy rug will last, but it was, it looked like a great thing for everybody to do and I'll leave first-day stuff to other people. And, Mrs.?
I just want to, a couple of things, yes, the tour was really great, but I, I commend MNO and for all the construction that went on at three of our schools, unbelievable work. And then also to thank the teachers for their flexibility because, you know, they are, were, you know, they're desperate to get into the classrooms, they're desperate to do something and they couldn't and they had to wait. And some of them were working on the weekends, so kudos to, kudos to our teachers, especially those teachers at the schools that were getting the air conditioning as well as the major construction at Wilson, Newport Heights and, and Mariners. Unbelievable job. I mean, it was touching, I mean, I looked at it and went, ooh, this is going to be ready.
Ready on Monday, Tuesday.
People are moving, you know, the offices are being moved in and it's, we're looking at it on Thursday and, ooh, they're going to be done by, okay, works for me. So it was really great. The one cautionary tale is that we've done some wonderful work and, and Enson particularly is just beautiful, it's lovely, but then all of a sudden you walk into the showers where we, we made a big concerted effort to, to limit all the showers and all of a sudden into of the showers are storage cabinets. I'm going, well, that doesn't work. They've already moved the shower, so I'm hoping that they'll be removed from the shower. I thought, hmm. Had the opportunity to, to do a couple of back-to-school nights in my new, in the new designated trust area at, went to ESPLA, fabulous, lots of parents. And, you know, I particularly appreciate the schools and how they're rolling out the, rolling them out, especially those schools like Kaiser who's rolling out Chromebooks. And so they're having, they're making efforts to meet with those parents ahead of time. So come at 5:00 and we're going to talk about the rollout of the, the Chromebooks. And so the parents came early in the sixth grade to get the rollout, fifth and sixth grade to get the rollout of the Chromebooks. And so those types of, of things, what I'm just flabbergasted is, if you take a look at it, all of them are happening on the 13th or, or the-
Right.
The 13th, the 12th today, no, tomorrow, 13th, the sixth was, and the sixth was a biggie too. So great job for everybody and thank you again for all the really hard work in maintenance and operations this summer. Beautiful new air conditioning units. I'm just amazed at how quiet they are, how lovely they are and just great job.
Can I just throw in one thing? And that is special thanks as well to the information technology group because they had to, they had to follow along behind all of that and put all of our technology back together again really quickly-
Yes.
-at the end. So thanks to MNO, of course, and facilities, but IT also worked very hard.
Just, just, just absolutely amazing. And then looking forward to the presentation on Victory With Honor that's coming up.
Me too.
October 1st, so.
Do we have RSVP? I don't know. Mrs. Franco?
And kudos to all of staff members because it was one of the best openings that I have ever seen since 1980.
Wow. Wow.
So, it was smooth.
Wow.
Safe and wonderful to see the students coming back with smiles on their faces and everyone ready to greet them. So, kudos to staff members all down the line.
Great, great.
That's all my whole report.
Okay, Mrs. Black. Again, ditto. And Mr. Davenport and I kind of brought up the rear because we were on our own pace, you know, which was slow boat, slow boat. But, we then had the benefit of meeting with teachers that were just getting in their classrooms. And, and they were saying, "We feel so bad, but we're wearing sweaters and went out, had a workout vest on and a coat."
Cold.
They were freezing. And, you know, but they were, you know, so appreciative. But it was, you know, for me, it was the first time, you know, because I never want to be in their space when they're, you know, got a gun to their head and, you know. And then having Labor Day on top of it, heaven forbid that they have any, you know, family vacations or something during that time. But it was great. And Mr. Davenport too was, you know, real impressed. And so, we made it to maybe half of the schools and, but it was really nice to have that, you know. And, and like the, you know, once we got to the lunch, it was great.
Lunch was fabulous.
It was great. And really appreciated, you know, all the efforts. And, and I've heard from parents how amazing the opening was. That's a first for me. I mean, usually you'd say, "Oh, first day of school's great." But I've, I've actually had people take the time to pick up the phone and call me and just say, "Wow." And, you know, that they were really impressed, a well-oiled machine. And transportation, I was watching them all around the schools, my school area, because I think that they do test runs or, you know, beforehand. So, we were giving them a wide berth because they weren't able to do that because of the construction on Irvine. So, and then I enjoyed football games. And again, our community is amazing. Before school, other schools were in session. And our, you know, community for both Corona Del Mar and Newport Harbor, you know, over at the stadium, you know, standing room only, you know, the band was out there practicing before school started. Kudos to all of them for supporting, you know, each other. It was just, you know, really a great thing. And it was pleasant. So, now I'm really interested on the, on the, what do you call it? One of the students from Newport Harbor was talking about doing tailgate. So, I'm gonna be interested.
They already started that.
Oh, you did? Oh. At the schools, we have tailgate?
At the stadium.
Oh, okay. They've started tailgates. Yeah, I haven't seen that.
Well, they did for, the CDM did it for their middle school for the parents to come and get involved. So, yeah.
They do that all the time.
Okay. And how did it go?
Well.
It goes well.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't hear any rumblings.
Yep.
No, I haven't. I mean, I, we hear it right away. The negative stuff, we hear right away. Mrs. DLC.
Yes. Well, all the pre-opening things that you mentioned were wonderful. The first day of school, I had the opportunity to visit all the CDM's zone schools. And elementary schools all had a red carpet rolled out. They had worked together to coordinate all this. And the kids walked through the red carpet, some of their mascots, mascots like Charlie Coyote at Newport Coast was there greeting all the kids. It was, and they loved it. I mean, the parent, everybody loved it. It was wonderful. CDM was a wonderful opening because they had a lot of police presence on the streets, which was great, directing traffic. So, that was a nice help. And I know Dr. Baumeister and Dr. Navarro were there helping as well. So, it was a wonderful opening there. And I just want to mention two things. One, when I was at Newport Coast, I was talking to Rebecca Heron, the music teacher who's at Newport Coast and East Plough. And she was, she was all excited because she got this grant that, and she bought iPads for all the music students. And I said, "Wow, where'd you get this?" And she, she applied for and got a Musical Visions grant from the Percern Foundation for $20,000.
Wow.
And she's implementing a variety of projects that blend music and technology to promote students' learning and growth. So, she's super excited. She's using that both at Newport Coast and East Plough this year. I thought that, and it was, it was just great. And then, I just wanted to read a thank you note that I received just today. Karen, we sincerely appreciate our city's partnership with the school district in all respects, especially our SRO program. Please share my appreciation with your fellow board members and Superintendent Navarro. We remain steadfastly committed to helping you achieve your goals. Sincerely, Will O'Neill.
That's right.
So, we all obviously are really pleased with the extra SRO. I know parents are thrilled to have that full coverage, five days a week. And there are some things that I think we could talk about them with. For instance, when I was at Newport Coast and the students and parents park over at the shopping center and walk across Newport Coast Drive, and it's a mess. I mean, there's, it's like New York City streets walking across there. When they get across the street, they're so wide breadth-wise that they're out in the streets. I think it would be great to try to get it, I know we're not gonna get an overpass, but at least a railing down that sidewalk so the kids stay inside on the sidewalk. Because those cars come down, rich part, really fast.
Yeah, exactly.
So, there are some things I think we can still, and I know we have a new city manager. I too went to the farewell party for David Kiff. It was wonderful if anybody was there. It was a fabulous afternoon. And I did meet the new city manager.
Oh, great.
And I told her that we obviously would like to get together. So, I think we should try to do that sooner rather than later since she just started this week.
And I forgot to ask something, but it's really, it was evident again tonight that when I went to back-to-school night, they're introducing the teachers, looked at one of the, one of the gals and I said, "Is your name Amanda Moore?" She goes, "Yeah." I said, "Oh, you graduated with my daughter." I would personally like to know how many of our stu, of our former graduates, because I think there are a lot of you.
Our staff members.
Our staff members. I just, teachers, employees. I, yes, there's one right here.
You got two more over there.
Yeah. So, I, there's one here, two right there. I would just like to know how many of our
Staff?
Staff members are graduates. At Ensign, at, at East Plough, there were at least two who, why, she's married now, but it's Margie White's daughter. I went, "Oh, my God, is your mother Margie White?" Yeah.
There are three. One's out on maternity leave.
One on maternity. I would just, if you could just compile a report, or can you, Britt, can you help with that? Just, I would like to, I would like to know how many, you know, because we tout our district, but it's really, it was evident when the, when the, when the, you know, Amanda was talking about it at her school, "Yes, I'm a graduate. I went to here. I went to here. I went to here. And I love this district. I went away and I'm back. I'm here." So, I would just like to know how many, I think it would be really fascinating to know how many of our employees within the district are actually graduates of our school district. So, if you don't mind.
I'm not gonna, I think that's a good idea. Maybe we can give them a pin.
A special pin, a special pin or something like that.
Yeah.
A Lumbering Boomerang.
Yeah. Okay. Ditto to all the, the wonderful events we went to prior to school starting. Special shout-out to Daily Pilot who put one of the best schools on the front page. Adams Elementary. And, yeah, it was great. It was great. So, good job, everyone. You're up again.
No, you have board committee reports.
Committee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one too.
I have one too.
I apologize.
So, you can go.
Okay. Costa Mesa Youth Sports Council had its first meeting of this school year. And we talked about the fact that we are moving forward with the Kaiser and Davis projects to light the fields so that for the community and the, the collaboration that we have going between them, it's in, it goes back and forth between legal, I believe it's with us now. We're wordsmithing it. And then, we're going to be meeting together to do it. So, it doesn't have to go back and forth. But it's getting closer and closer to reality. And also, the group is looking forward to us actually working a review of the JUA. We've talked about it for two years, I do believe. Mrs. Snell, isn't it about two years?
Yes, it is.
Then we talked about it. But we would really like to move forward and do it now because this, in Costa Mesa, the fields are desperate, the city is desperate for the use of fields. And we would like to get that at least started. It may take us two years once we get started. So, that's the report from the, for those of you that don't know, it's, it's a committee that is led by Costa Mesa United, that, that is open to all of the youth sports organizations in the entire city and us, and how we collaborate together. It's a wonderful, and we do dabble in Newport, but not often. Mrs. Flore.
So, for ROP, just wanted to, the young lady from Estancia mentioned the Medical Academy. Just wanted to tell you that that mannequin that she's talking about was a $15,000 mannequin that does lots of really cool things. And so, I think that it would be really behoove us to go out there. It looks like a medical setup. It's just unbelievable. ROP also has a new, the Construction Technology gentleman, I forgot his last name, but his first name is Dwayne. He's very excited, lots of industry experience, and he's, he's starting there. Of course, we approved the, the Sports Marketing and Sports Medicine Program at Corona Del Mar, where, Costa Mesa. And we are, we are working diligently. It's one of our highest priorities is to talk about INVEL versus regional, regional, regional classes because of, because of the disparity that's occurring. So, we are, we're working hard with, with the Steering Committee. And also, we just got distressing news that Lynn Simons, who is our CBO at the district, is retiring. Her husband has retired and now he is desperate to have her home. So, Lynn's been with us, with, with the ROP for a number of years. And, I mean, we at the ROP have absolutely perfect audits. And we have Babernick trying today because we don't have any ASPs. I mean, let's be real clear. We don't have ASPs. We don't have any of that. So, we literally have, our, our audits are absolutely the finest you've ever seen because there's no audit findings. So, we're gonna be starting to look for a, a Chief Business Official. Unfortunately, they're gonna be, it's gonna be really hard and, you know, difficult to find. And then, in terms of the new grant funding, we're still getting mixed messages from the state in terms of not necessarily the funding that's coming directly, but that $150 million that's being allocated to the community colleges is supposed to be coming to us. Now, the question is, who's gonna be the, who's gonna be on those boards to make the decision? Because it's gonna be regionalized. So, if you figure that there are eight regions in the state, 150, you're probably looking at maybe $20 million. And who's gonna go to those, from the state to those regional consortiums, and then it's gonna come down here. There's lots of discussion about what's it gonna go for. It's supposed to come to school districts, I mean, ROPs, but we don't know now. So, it's gonna be up in the air. So.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay.
Okay, just really quickly, I hope I'm not stealing Sarah's thunder, but on Monday, Chief Sharpneck from Costa Mesa called to tell us that while he can't give us the third SRO, they're going to be filling in the days off with overtime.
Oh, wonderful.
So, we'll have coverage on all the days in our, in Costa Mesa as well.
We have to pay half of overtime.
We always pay half.
But half of the overtime?
So, Chief said he felt comfortable that he can get it covered all the time.
Great.
But he needed to let me know that it's, he can't make people take overtime.
No.
So, there are times where we may not have a day or so, but he feels very confident they'll be able to cover it.
That's really wonderful.
That is wonderful.
That's great. Yay.
Sorry, Sarah.
Make sure you let him know. We appreciate it.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a report.
Oh, my goodness.
Hey. I just have an announcement. Very excited. It's, it's the beginning for our students, but also, this is the beginning of our Leadership Institutes for both our classified and certificated personnel. So, we announced today that we are accepting applications for both institutes and that they will close October 1st. The Classified Leadership Institute actually begins October, I believe it's, oh, I think it's the 29th. And then, November 15th is the certificated. So, we are looking to continue that opportunity to develop leadership and build capacity amongst our staff. Very excited.
That's been very successful. We've promoted several people because of that, their growth of.
Very, very, very successful. You have some of our participants from the past sitting here.
Sitting right there.
And there they are.
So, we're looking forward to it.
I need you guys to take it out. So.
We need another pin.
Yes.
No report.
Okay.
No report.
Okay. Okay.
No report.
You were pulling the microphone. Don't.
I was gonna pull up the microphone and say, "No, no."
Oh, okay.
They gave me all this time.
Yeah.
Wow.
I know.
A little report. I'm, I'm gonna jump on the bandwagon about our summer music programs here.
Unintended.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely intended. First of all, I'm so proud of the presentations that we got to hear earlier in the day. And I do want to thank the board for your support and direction in, in really doing some great things during the summer. And I think we've been doing a lot of great things for many years, but you gave us an opportunity to really reflect on what we were doing to build an even better summer program for our kids. So, if we can jump into Jeff Trader's Wayback Machine and go back three years, we had a thriving engineering academy for kids. But if you recall, there was a very long waitlist.
Yeah.
And the representation who, of the students who were getting in was not representative of our entire district. And the question came from the DIAS is, "Well, why don't we provide transportation?" So, that was one very significant change. And then, we also expanded the number of seats. And not only transportation, but expanded the number of opportunities for kids. And something that I, I don't want to go unnoticed is that every kid got in.
Oh, that's fabulous.
And that's wonderful. The other thing with the Music Academy, I tell you, I, being a former music teacher, I go there and watch what's happening and it's amazing work. And so, both of these are having such tremendous impact, not only for the kids in the program, but the teachers who are involved in the program. So, again, back to the Wayback Machine, we were struggling getting teachers to work any summer.
Yeah.
It's hard for them to work all year long and then to come back in the summer to work some more. And you know what? But now, I think they are seeing such great benefit in not only teaching the students that they have, but bringing that back. And so, it's impacting even more kids. And that's wonderful. And then, just, just another point about the Summer Language Academy that you heard. Again, we were offering programs for English language, but it was very traditional. And I'm very happy that Vanessa came and said, "You know, how about bringing this program together?" And I was very familiar with it in Anaheim Union. And that was one of the easiest decisions we made to bring that forth. And again, to, to work with students who not only struggling with the language, they're struggling with the culture and, and everything. The impact that that's having is, is tremendous, not only the kids, but again, as the teachers go back to their own classroom. So, thank you for the opportunity today and thank you for your support and direction on those programs.
Thank you.
Well, I'll find something else to talk about. I just wanted to let you know that we have our first Community Advisory Committee presentation coming up. And it is on Tuesday, October 11, from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning. And, and then, Tuesday, October 23rd, which is a board night, unfortunately. And that's at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we're gonna hold those over at Harper, the Assessment Center. And on the, for the evening program, we are gonna provide childcare. So, we know that in the last year when we did AM/PM sessions, they seemed to be very successful. So, and, you know, our presenters are gracious to give us, you know, a, you know, two different times to be able to do that. So, our first presenter is Dr. Mark Lerner. And as you know, we have him as our medical consultant to the district. And he's going to be presenting on mental health considerations for special education students. So, we're excited about that. And we're getting the word out. It's going out on Peach Jar, I think, tomorrow. So, but we're excited to kick off the year with that. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. So, I, I had a request from our protector, our officer here, to adjourn the meeting on the, in honor of the memory of all those first responders.
Yes.
Firemen and victims of 9/11. So, thank you. So, thank you, and we'll do that.
So, move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good night.
Good night.